Ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'm fine. Awesome, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Tina Bonney and I'm a member of the Paid Family and Medical Leave Benefits Authority, and I'll be moderating today's hearing. On behalf of the members of the authority, we are extremely pleased that you're joining us here today. Today's proceeding is also being recorded and will be posted on the department's webpage. This is the second public hearing of the year to solicit public comments regarding the implementation and administration of the program under the direction of the Maine Department of Labor. We are here today to achieve this purpose. Specifically, we are inviting public comments on any issues related to paid family leave benefits and paid medical leave benefits and on the experiences of employers and employees with this program. The authority will be meeting immediately following the public comment period to discuss the feedback and whether it plans to advance any ideas for potential future legislation. This hearing is not meant to be a forum to answer questions or come to consensus on any issues presented to the authority during the meeting. We also ask that if you are providing an example of a challenge that you have had with the program involving a staff member, that you do not identify the staff member by name in the public forum. After comments have been provided, I or committee members may ask clarifying questions to ensure we capture your comments accurately. If any committee member has a question for a speaker, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Participants who wish to comment in person or online will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. If you are attending online and wish to offer a comment, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom, and we will call on you. Participants will also be given a 30-second warning prior to the conclusion of the three minutes. When you speak, please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as the town you are from, or the organization or association that you are representing. Also, please be aware that we have interpreters here. So if you can try to modulate your speaking to not be talking too fast, that really helps with the interpreting. Finally, if you are attending in person, please sign in using one of the sign-in sheets available on the desk prior to entering the room back in the back there. Finally, speakers must refrain from engaging in disruptive conduct, including but not limited to using vulgar and/or obscene language, threatening others using words or other actions, using pejorative or discriminatory language, making defamatory comments, and offering comments on matters unrelated to the purpose of the meeting. If there are any questions on the process before we open the floor to comments. Before we open the hearing, we'd like to take a few minutes to allow the interpreters to move to the podium, make additional adjustments as needed. Depending on how long the comments run, we may take a break around 10:45. So just be aware of that. We'll see how things are going. Are we ready?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So we welcome the first person. There is not a line. You can feel free to jump up. Three minutes, we'll have a timer. And at 30 seconds to go, you'll see that yellow folder. And at three minutes, you'll see the red folder. Just finish up your comments at that time. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Kristin Bluedier, and I represent Augusta District 94, which is part of Lewiston. And I was proud to serve as the House sponsor of Maine's paid family and medical leave law in the 131st legislature. And I continue to be a strong supporter of the program today. First, I want to thank all of you for being such thoughtful stewards of this program. The responsibility you carry is enormous, and I deeply appreciate the diligence and care you are bringing to implementation. Your commitment to building a program that will be sustainable for generations of Miners has not gone unnoticed. We have just concluded a very intense legislative session where paid family and medical leave was front and center. A wide range of bills were introduced, with many that would have fundamentally weakened the structure of the program. Some proposals would have flattened wage replacement to a single 65% rate, threatening both solvency and fairness. Others would have carved out entire industries like agriculture or education undermining universality. Still, others sought to make the program voluntary, delay eligibility, or even repeal the law altogether. On paper, many of these looked like small tweaks for technical reasons. But in reality, they would have significantly weakened and in some cases dismantled the program altogether. At the end of the day, all of these bills were defeated. The only bill that passed was the Department of Labor's bill to actually make minor technical changes. That outcome reflects the legislature's recognition that the program is fundamentally strong and that Miners are behind it, 75% statewide across demographics. That stability must be our guiding principle right now. My message to you today is simple. Please stay the course. Benefits will go live in 2026, and between now and then, the most important work we can do is to ensure smooth, reliable implementation. Miners, workers, and employees alike need confidence that the program they are contributing to is stable, predictable, and ready when they need it. Adjustments may be needed down the road, but they should be based on real experience once the program is operational, not on speculation or founded in political pressure. In closing, I am incredibly proud that Maine is leading the way on paid family and medical leave, and I know this authority will continue to safeguard the program's long-planned success. Thank you again for your thoughtful stewardship and for the work you are doing every day to make this program a reality for Maine families. Thank you. Yeah, sorry. If you're good, does anyone have a question?
Yeah.
Kristin, sorry. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready to go whenever you are?
Great. My name is Joe Edwards. I'm from Reedfield. As of this month, I've been a licensed attorney for 50 years, over four of which I spent as the Maine insurance superintendent. I also am the chairman of the Maine Jobs Council Board, and I administer a number of workers' compensation group self-insurance trusts. A number of the members of those comp trusts were interested in creating a trust to handle the responsibilities, financial responsibilities of the Pay, Paying Medical Leave Act. And they asked me for some advice, and I'm here representing them today. To be very clear, all of these employers support the program. The program has two components, benefits and administration. These employers completely support and want to implement and provide the benefits. There's no question about that. Absolutely support the program in every way. The issue is trying to keep the cost of administration down and make it as efficient and cost-effective as possible. Unfortunately, there have been conflicts with the Department of Labor on that issue, and we've ultimately filed a lawsuit in Superior Court, which has been answered by the Attorney General on behalf of the Department of Labor. Our answer to their response should be due this week, and then the proceeding will be set for hearing in Superior Court. I'm here. I'm not going to comment on the pending litigation. That's sort of customary. But I did want to make you aware of the fact that this issue is out there. Three minutes does not begin to enable me to give you a detailed history of how we get here. But essentially, what's happened is initially, these employers wanted to have a group of self-insurers. We went to DOL to ask if that was permitted. It said no. Even though that's not prohibited in the statute, DOL's interpretation was that group self-insurance is not permitted. So all of these employers, about 50 of them, have applied individually under the statute and been individually approved. They are approved by DOL to self-insure individually and have provided the surety bond required by the statute and intend to provide all the benefits that are required under the statute. The only thing they did was get together as a group and approach an insurance company to get a quantity discount on the surety amounts. They wanted to be more efficient and not spend any more money than necessary on the surety bonds. So they went to a carrier as a group. DOL said that was not permitted and that it was that any group action was prohibited, notwithstanding the fact that the statute is silent on that. I'm out of time. I just scratched the surface, but at least you're on notice that this proceeding is going to be sort of winding its way through the courts relatively quickly.
Does anyone have any questions for Joe? Yes?
Good. I just want to know, so would this be like MAMIC treats workers' comp? Is that kind of what the employers are looking to do here?
Well, MAMIC's an insurance company.
Understood.
So that's really a different thing. All they're looking to do is take advantage of a group and volume discount and surety bond, and also with the TPA arrangement with grants. They get a discount by bringing 50 companies, but they are legally individually self-insured. That doesn't change. And a quick analogy is, you know, a cow has two eyes, a nose, and mouth, and four legs. It's not a horse. No matter how many horse-like characteristics that you have for a cow, it's never going to be a horse. What's happened here is because group buying is indicative of, is one of the activities that group self-insurers do, DOL said, well, that makes you a group self-insure. It does legally. They're individually self-insured. That's the license they have. None of their activities changed that fact. I mean, we all have driver's licenses. If 10 of us got together to get a quantity discount on gasoline from a provider, that wouldn't create a group driver's license. The license is the license, and the employers have no power to change that. That's a legal entity, and they're individually licensed. The question is, once they are individually licensed, do they have the freedom to take steps to minimize the cost of the administration? DOL says no. We say yes. Came out.
Thanks for clarification.
Anyone else?
Yes, Jen. So I appreciate the analogy using a cow and a dairy farmer, but.
I had no idea. You would breed cows, our horses.
I do, I do. So, but here's my question, and pardon my ignorance. Would the insurance policy be individual to each employer and their employees? Or would it be the same policy being applied to all?
Well, there's no policy here. An insurance policy comes from an insurance company. This is self-insured coverage. It is individual to each individual employer. Each individual employer is legally responsible for its own claims. There's no sharing of risk, which is really the fundamental difference between individual and group. The group, the comp group trusts have a collection of 25 or 30 employers, but the employers are not individually responsible for those claims. If one of them has a claim, it's the group's claim. The group pays the premium. The group pays the claim. The group decides who's a member and who isn't. In this case, that's not what's happening. DOL is licensed to each company individually. They are individually responsible for their claims payments. They are individually legally isolated, and there is no group transfer. There's no transfer of liability, legal liability for claims payments from the individual company to a group. The group, to the extent it exists, was just a collection of individuals getting together to get a volume discount on surety bonds and TPA services. No insurance mechanism whatsoever.
Yes, Jen.
Since I'm not in the financial business, a surety bond guarantees that those benefits will be paid if the employer runs out of money. Is that correct?
Um, no. More or less. I mean, the surety bond theoretically is never paid unless the carrier can recover the money from the underlying entity. Surety bonds have a zero default rate or a zero loss ratio rate. But if for whatever reason an insured entity doesn't pay, the surety bond will pay. But then it assumes it'll be able to collect the money back from whoever was recovered. So it's a little different than an insurance bond.
But in this case, it's the employer who collects the money.
It would be. Yeah, I don't, I mean, if the employer didn't pay benefits, the surety would step in to pay them. DOL holds the bond, so DOL would step in and have the surety pay if the employer was not paying. But technically, then, the bond isn't an insurance policy. It's a guarantee. Just a little difference, a technical difference. The other issue, just for your information, is that and the other thing that this collection of employers wanted to do was provide joint and sever liability for claims payments. That is a better security than a surety bond. And it doesn't require sending tens of thousands of dollars of main money to an out-of-state insurance company, which is what's happening with the surety bonds. These companies are absolutely wasting money buying surety bonds when the option of joint sever liability would be much better security, hand-free. And DOL said they couldn't do that either. So they're just burdening this program with unnecessary administrative costs, is our view. And throughout this whole process, and it's been a lengthy one, going back April, DOL has never once said why. We have no idea why they're so militantly opposed to this, what the legitimate state interest is.
Yeah. So presumably, since you've filed this, it's a closed group of employers. Is it intended to remain so?
No. Now, if the lawsuit's successful and we can reconstitute the group, then any employer that's qualified still have to get licensed by DOL as an individual self-insurer. But then they'd be welcome to join the buying group.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, yes, Jen. So currently, how many employers and how many employees?
There are 50 employers, I think, that originally intended to join the group buying association. I think 38 actually signed the complaint. I got, I mean, I got the list. Take a look, but I think it's 30-some in the complaint. There were a number who did not want to participate in the litigation, but do want to participate in trusts. I don't know the number of employees.
Ballpark it.
Well, C.N. Brown, Robbins Lumber, and thousands, a few thousand, but I don't know how many.
You have to excuse me on this one, but how would DOL even know if the policies, if the policies are negotiated between a company and the insurance firm? How does DOL even know that there's a buy?
We told them. We were transparent.
And, but you could still do that, right? And why would?
That's our belief. I mean, we think these are things that are within the purview of the companies to manage the program. They didn't give the benefits, right, of the surety bond. That's what the statute requires. There's nothing else in the statute on any of this. DOL, in our view, has made this stuff up and created these requirements out of thin air. We don't know why, and we think it's an intrusion on our ability to manage the program.
So at the end of the day, it doesn't change the relationship between the employer and the insurance company, right?
Well, in our case, there is no insurance company. We're self-insure.
Because you're saying, thank you.
Doesn't change the relationship between the employer and the benefits.
Sorry.
We're completely behind the benefits.
Oh, wait. Do you want to go?
I have a suggestion. I think it would be much more helpful for me if Nancy or someone from staff could just send us the complaint and AG's response on that is forthcoming. I don't really find a lot of benefit arguing the case, you know, here at the public hearing with one of the litigants. So that's, that's would be much more helpful for me.
All right, this is Maria. I did circulate the complaint. Everybody should have that, but we can recirculate it.
Thank you, Maria.
I'd also add, we were going to circulate the three documents, which we think you need to have an overview. If you just have a complaint, our complaint makes us sound really good. Their response makes them sound really good. And then we've got our answer to their response, and then you'll have sort of the whole set of counter. So I think just if you really want to understand it, you should get all three documents. And our answer probably won't get filed till sometime this week.
Thank you. And did you have?
Yeah, just one question, clarification around the intention that MDOL would not be aware. Isn't it correct that the individual employers would all have to file a separate surety bond? And this group would file a single surety bond, so it'll be very clear?
No, the group got a group purchase discount for individual bonds. The bonds are all issued individually to the employers. But we said that we did get the discount, and we were very forthcoming about that, not thinking there was any reason or that that was an issue. It's just, you know, we wanted to report to the regulating authorities so they had a clear picture. They did, and they responded.
So I think we're going to be following up with that. Is any other questions? Great. We appreciate your comments. Appreciate that. Feel free. Anyone who wants to come up next?
Morning. My name is Bruce Garry. I'm an attorney in Augusta, and I'm representing the group that filed the complaint. I don't want to repeat anything you heard from Mr. Edwards, but there is one point that I would really like to emphasize. When you look at what is supposed to happen under the program, if you are individually self-insured, you, meaning the employer, collect the money. You decide whether you want to collect half a percent or pay all the 1%. And then you hold out the money. As claims arise after the program becomes initiated, you pay them. The state does not get that money. It stays with the employer. The state loses nothing by interpreting the statute to allow for these individual employers to work as a group to get lower rates. We all have suggested we can use the same third-party administrator. If you do, that means the person administering the program, the company administering the program, has great expertise. It's representing some 30, 40 people individually, but they're working together and the costs go down. Same thing with the surety bonds, and I'm glad that question was answered, that there are individual surety bonds. There are. So I sit here as I think about this case, and I say, why would the department ever take this position? Are they losing money? No. Are they paying money? No. Are they changing the ability of the employer to pay the claim? No. So what is the problem? If employers can find a way to get lower costs to provide the services, which means that there's that much more money. Now, whether the employer puts in his pocket his profits, whether it gives it to employees his increased wages, whether it decides to keep short-term disability along with this program, I don't know. But the point is, the costs go down. It costs the department nothing. Why would the department? Why would this board? Why would anybody? Why would the legislature oppose this? And remember, it's the legislature that said, you can individually self-insure. You can keep the money yourself. You can pay the claims yourself. You have the surety bond to back it up. What's the downside? We've never gotten it. We don't want to be in litigation. It's expensive. It's time-consuming. It's costing employers money. That could be going for other things. And I'll leave you with one point. As, thank you, as things are going now, these employers are paying the whole 1%. They're prepared to put in the whole 1%, not half, 1% from the employees. Can they do that if they don't get these discounts that they want to negotiate? I don't know. Why put that option at risk? Makes no sense. So I appreciate the opportunity who have made these comments. I hope I stay away from the ones Mr. Edwards made, so that you heard something different. I am pleased to hear that he said he thought we did a great complaint, because we think the same thing. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions the committee might have.
Additional questions? No? Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
I just correct one thing. Mr. Garry already said, I said, we're not paying just to be in litigation. That's true of the employers, but not him.
Okay. If we have another person who'd like to offer a comment?
Hi. Hi. My name is Louise Wilkinson. I'm from Auburn, Maine. And please forgive me, I don't have a prepared speech. I represent one of the employers that was originally approved for a self-insured plan, got our own bond, submitted everything, got our approval, thought we were set and ready to go, and then later was told, got an email that we were part of a group and that wasn't allowed, and we had to get out of the group. When I asked what statute that was, like how that was made up, I was told there was a frequently asked question that was added after the fact, and that was, that was the basically the law that we had to follow. That was what I was told why we had to get out of this group. I'd like to say that a lot of our employees live paycheck to paycheck. We are 100% behind this program. We chose to self-insure because literally right now, we wanted to cover the whole thing for our employees. We had the option, and we still have the option, to go out to a large insurance company. I was quoted 9, instead of 1%, 0.9%. But I chose this program in hopes that we could, with the TPA savings and the surety bond savings, that we could kind of lower that in order to be able to provide this to our employees for free. Because I will tell you, a lot of them have seen this on their paycheck and said, I want to opt out. And we all know that's not an option, but they're going to be able to, because we're going to cover it. But we, we want to be able to cover it. We don't want these costs to keep going up and up so that we have to then pass this cost on to them. And that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Yep. So any question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Randy Place. I'm a selectman from the Towne Memorial. We have a population of about 1,000, about 500 taxpayers. We have a very small staff, just several people who qualify for this program. More currently has an approved self-insured private plan, which has worked out fine. I can't mention names, but two people in this group here came to our town, met with me. We had dinner. We had a little tour, but it worked out great. The template for working that self-insured plan worked well. The checklist worked well. The cost to get us to approve this was $940. And so we don't have to make contributions, so that worked out well. If we'd made the contributions, it would cost us $1,200 over a three-year period. Now, I know that's only $260, but for a small municipality, if everyone were to remember state and federal government, if you watch at pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. So that's why we chose this, and we have control over the system. I think we have a better field than the Department of Labor does, so it all worked out good. So we have the plan. We don't have any problems with that. We pay them 100%. We pay 100% of their salaries, so there's no percentage or anything like that. Now, the cons I want to get into was, number one, I don't think the salaries from this, maybe not this working group, but for the paid family leave people, should come out of the fund. I mean, it should be distributed through the entire state. I mean, you're taking several million dollars, in my math, if there's like 27 employees that work in this program. They're talking several million dollars, I think, in salaries and benefits. They come right off the top of the fund. It's meant for the people who need to help. So I think that should be a change. The other thing is contributions in small towns like ours, we have people contributing that aren't even eligible for the program. That should go away. If you're not, if you're not going to be eligible, you shouldn't have to contribute. We're talking 80-year-old people here working at our staff. They're not going to be getting jobs in any other place. There should be a way to prevent them from having to contribute if they're not going to be eligible. And the other thing with the surety bond, the surety bond was $1,000 for the Towne Memorial. The minimum one we could find was $1,500. So that's $300 in a three-year period, $100 a year for a surety bond. Give me a break. A small municipality, you ought to be able to trust this for $1,000 to cover the surety bond. So I'm with these other folks. It's very small potatoes for you. So I'm with these other folks. It's very small potatoes for you. But the surety bond, we can do a reserve. We can do it. There's a lot of different ways we can cover that to save us three hundred dollars. Give me a break. I mean, a thousand dollars is what we needed for a surety bond. And the last thing is, anyone who has, anyone who wants to reach out tomorrow, you know, to help through the program and look at our plan to help them out, if it would make a difference, then well, I think the Department of Labor should give those names out, or give them points of contact, so we could help anybody that may need to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else in person want to speak?
Good morning. My name is Patrick Woodcock. I'm a resident of Portland. I'm the president and CEO of the Maine State Chamber of Commerce. First of all, thank you for your service on this authority. Though the chamber has had concerns with the law and its implementation, we are very pleased this authority exists. We're also very appreciative of staff work. It is an enormous undertaking to put this program in place. I didn't want to give a few areas that, just for context, that we see this program. Just, just some statistics for you. Maine has one of the most seasonal economies in the country. Just this past year, with the most recent data, the June total sales for retail are 50% higher than they were in January. I think we all know this intuitively. Furthermore, we are one of the highest percentages of businesses that qualify as small businesses. So about 60% of our businesses are small. That's one of the highest percentages in the country. We also have the 11th lowest unemployment rate in the country. And our most recent employment projections were revised downward, that our employment growth will be point one percent in 2026 and 2027. We have one of the most acute labor situations in the country. There are three provisions that I would encourage this authority to consider as you look at your purview of making legislative changes. The first one that has been, quite frankly, kind of confused by the legislature is this provision of 120 days. Specifically, when is an employee eligible for the benefits? We have recommended that an employee should be eligible after 120 days as an employee. That's consistent with sick leave and other benefits. If they confuse, there is a 120-day provision for that job protection. But honestly, I was sort of confused during the legislative process. Furthermore, one, one overall arching is we think that we should replicate the practices in other states. We have a lot of confidence in what other states have done. 120 days is a consistent provision in many other states paid family medical leave. The other aspect that's unique to Maine that I think needs some careful review is the hardship provision. I've read this sentence a million times, and this is the only sentence that is provided in the statute. Use of such leave must be scheduled to prevent undue hardship of the employer as reasonably determined by the employer. That's the only guidance in the statute, and it is the only state that has this provision. I give the DOL a lot of credit for trying to operationalize this. My concern is that for our smallest businesses, the way that the regulations work, it will be very challenging for those employers to utilize that provision. The, just last sentence, that provision, I think, is attempting to help the least sophisticated businesses. But the rules challenge the least sophisticated businesses to take advantage of it. I think that there should be further guidance in the statute of how to use that without, that enables that employer. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Thank you so much for your time. Oh, yes.
Could I come back to Patrick? Did I miss that official?
No, of course I can, yeah.
Okay.
All right, I. He's here.
Patrick, sorry about the delayed response here, but you talked about slim guidance on the hardship issue. What are you looking at? What are you, what kind of better guidance would you like coming out of this group?
Thank you for the question. Effectively, you now have to apply to the Department of Labor to meet the hardship standard. So if you are a, this is an example people have used, if a chef is leaving, they're their main chef in the height of season, you do have to make this application to the Department of Labor for the approval. I'm concerned that a lot of restaurants, a lot of businesses, won't utilize this provision unless it's specifically clear of, under what enumerated situations you can be granted a hardship exemption. The legislation that we proposed was from June to through the summer months, that you can be granted a hardship exemption. In addition, employees, employers less than 15 employees will be granted if you have an employee. I think it's within the spirit of the law that we recognize that there would be a hardship if you have 15 employees and one leaves. Now, to be clear, that doesn't mean the person isn't eligible for benefits. It's that they would reasonably create a schedule to work and manage that hardship for the business. So it needs to be just clear for these, the smallest businesses in our state, that we can utilize it. But my last point is, I do think it's important that this authority monitor the data of this. Now, there are people that think, that would argue that this provision will limit ability to, for the spirit of utilizing the benefits of the program. Well, let's man, let's, let's maintain transparency. How many businesses are utilizing this? If there are no businesses that are utilizing it, I think we need to make adjustments to the program.
On the exemption piece?
On the hardship. Yeah.
Are you all set?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I get it. I get it.
Jenny? I do just want to parallel up on something you said. So the proposal and the wishes of your constituency is for more regulation with regards to the hardship. You want more regulation?
Well, more clarity within the regulation. We've proposed in our comments during the regulatory process that there be enumerated areas that an employer, I mean, we read this language, that the undue hardship on the employer is reasonably determined by the employer. It is the employer's decision to make a determination of what's reasonable. Yet, under the regulations, it's actually the DOL that makes the determination of the reasonless of that request. What we had sought was that there be specific enumerated reasons that meet that threshold if that is the purpose of the request for that employer. This is a seasonal business, a lobsterman, you know, 90% of our catches are about four months. If that's during the lobster hauling, I would say that as a, within the spirit of the law, that that is a reasonable hardship. And there should be, there should be a green light that, and quick approval, that they are asserting this hardship, and it should be approved by DOL if that's the specific reason that they're requesting the hardship. Does that make sense?
It does, but now you're shifting, it seems to, that you're shifting to, I understand. I'll stop. I understand. Thank you.
So just to be clear, we had sought legislative clarification with the legislature in this past session as well. It really isn't much of a provision. It's one sentence. And it's very, I think it's very hard for DOL to operationalize this one sentence that doesn't exist in any other state's paid family medical leave law.
David?
But to Jenny's point, I think, if I say, I can't be without my butcher for three months, he can't go. Period. The Department of Labor has to grant the exemption. Is that, am I thinking that through?
That's right.
Okay, so what is the problem?
So in your situation, the butcher seeks a leave right before the holidays.
Yep.
Really important time.
Yep.
Under the current standard, you will have to make a, this is a hardship on my business. I have to make that case to the Department of Labor. I think what we should have is, if you are a business less than, less than 15 employees, you just make that assertion and it's approved. So there should be some enumerated cases that are very clear. I'm not concerned about our larger employers taking advantages. This is the least sophisticated businesses that you're asking them to utilize a program that I don't think they know, and I don't think we know the standard of review from the Department of Labor. Let's, let's enumerate what we can all agree on are reasonable hardships, and that they can take advantage of those assertions.
Okay.
Jeff?
David asked my question.
Okay. Perfect. Any? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Hello, good morning. I'm delighted to join you here today. My name is Dusty McSpreg. I'm the executive director of Maine Women's Lobby. And I'm here today representing the Maine Paid Leave Coalition, group of more than 45 partner organizations serving workers, survivors of abuse and violence, caregivers, and people who need back there. Our organizations represent over 100,000 Mayners, and our partner organizations have been working for many years to make sure we have our fingers to the pulse of what workers need in this program. That's the voice we try to bring when we come to the legislature, when we come to you. And we have really appreciated so much the work that you all have done as an authority, and that the Department of Labor has done. We have been making sure that we're engaged with our members in what they're seeing, what they're hearing, and so that we can bring those perspectives to you. And you've really shown, as you've like pulled this huge effort together, the way that you are listening to workers and employees. In our first, in our last comment session, we raised specific concerns about misinformation or misperceptions relating to paid leave premiums. We were happy to see that you immediately addressed those in additional employee resources on the website, the benefits calculator, the premium chart. Thank you for that good work, that sort of responsive work. We are hearing that that's making a difference out in the field. We do want to flag that we know there will be more public education about the program. We really hope that the authority in MDOL will continue to focus on education for workers. Our experience across the country and working with other partners is that the more people understand about the program, the more effective the implementation period is. So just continuing to lift that concern up. And then I want to just address possible legislation. I understand from your last meeting that that's something that you're considering. Somebody who spent hundreds of hours in the legislature this year. It really brought home for me still how complex this program is. And so therefore, there is very reasonable confusion and ongoing learning period. Our, my observation was that, is that the end or?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. That, that the many proposals created more confusion, not less. So we really hope that you will let the current program as it stands move forward. I do know that there will be continued work around hardship provision. I expect Patrick and I plan to have, you know, this conversation for years, as we've been doing. And that we have an opportunity to let the program move forward, see how it works, and ensure that people get to the benefits that they deserve, and that we take that learning to move forward. I have a lot more I could say about hardship. I will pause there and ask if you have any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Ben?
Is your constituency primarily employees?
Almost exclusively.
And have, did they have any problems understanding the hardship issue? Is it a problem for employees as well? Because in my opinion, the programs deserve both employers and employees, so I'd like to know that.
I think, you know, I'm really sensitive to the fact that the, the, as we say, the least sophisticated businesses are the ones who will most struggle to understand and implement a complex program. Our observation from the folks that we represent is that the least sophisticated businesses are often employing the least sophisticated workers. And/or workers who have less power in the workplace, or workers who have less power to move on to other employment situations. And so our focus is ensuring that we are not creating sort of standardized approaches around hardship that end up excluding specific sets of workers. Right now, the workers we're talking to are not pointing to the hardship specifically, because they're not in a position of being, they don't perceive that they are in a position to be able to fight back against it. If the employer seeks a hardship, then maybe they just don't get the benefits they paid for. And that's the real concern, is being able to preserve access to the benefits that they're paying into. And our concern is not having sort of blanket exclusions that exclude certain sets of the workforce or certain types of workers. In part because it's rife for, you know, it's high risk for discrimination. And in part because we want to preserve the universality of the program. I certainly think that the department has worked very hard to ensure that they're putting sort of guardrails around this in the rules. And because it is a first-of-its-kind proposal, we will be talking about it for years.
Yes, Jeff?
Yes, do you, are they aware that the hardship exemption, whatever, only applies to changing the schedule of the leave and not to, to prevent leave entirely?
Yeah, I think that that is part of what we have tried to share with workers, that this is about scheduling, not access. There are, the questions for us are like, how far out can you go? Are we talking about two weeks, 30 days, six months? And also what will end up constituting an emergency, because obviously we don't plan a car accident.
And any other questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks so much. I appreciate your opportunity to be here.
There, yes. Hello?
Morning.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Nate Cludier. I'm here on behalf of Hospitality Maine. We represent Maine's restaurant and lodging industries, of which, the latest I checked, there are over 3,300 licensed eating establishments in the state, and over 670 lodging properties, all of which play an essential role in your local economy, the state's economy, and is certainly the backbone of what keeps this state running. Appreciate you soliciting comment this morning, so that we can share our industry's perspective. We do agree with the chamber on two of the points that they raised. The 120-day period before eligibility kicks in is something that's very important to our industry. It's consistent with other statutes related to employment matters, including the Maine Retired Investment Trust, which has 120-day period before employers are required to enroll them in the program, as well as Maine's Earn Paid Leave Law. That was intentionally added, that 120-day provision in there. Secondly, on the undue hardship, we agree there's going to be a lot of continued conversation around this. Unfortunately, because the language is so ambiguous in the statute, it really makes it difficult for employers to grasp what's going to be an allowable circumstance of an undue hardship. Is restaurant X's business the same hardship as restaurant Y's? And how is that to power them? As was stated, there's a one-sentence, one-sentence fault fire, essentially, that puts the onus on the employer to make that determination. The rules, which I was just reviewing, goes further than- The rules, which I was just reviewing, goes further than that and creates circumstances. There's four subsets in which the department, or excuse me, the employer has to meet that the department has set. So the statute really runs contrary, or the rules rather, run contrary to the statutory intent of letting the employer make that determination. You'll also see in the testimony that I provided that there's a, at the top, you see, support the minority report to LD eight ninety-four. This was something that, an amendment to one of the bills that legislators worked with the business community and businesses on and developing. You had to make ten changes. What would those ten changes be from the program? These were modest in nature. They didn't turn the program on its head. Thought that it made a very good faith attempt to keep the program foundationally at its core and what it's intended to do. These were all opposed unfortunately by the department. None of these changes passed. We're hoping that this authority, which, you know, it's kind of similar to the Fed. You act as an independent body away from the executive, away from the legislative franchise. And it's your authority to make sure that all facets of, all facets of this program are operating as a liberty and as independent. Happy to answer any questions. There's nothing I hear about more than this program from my members. So I really do appreciate that or Thomas.
Is there any questions? Thank you for, oh, good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Robert Bradley, Supervisor for Freeport Public Works. We already are off at twelve weeks of M L A. Personal time, sick leave, EPL. In, the people, my crew is actually kind of upset that we're being forced into this since we already have that benefit. Basically, that's it. And we're already, we're already taking care of it townwide. So, and I went to HR and asked them, and they said that we couldn't opt out of it. So we're basically, we're gonna have, we have our twelve weeks already, but we're not going to be able to use that benefit through you guys. And we can't go in these twelve weeks and then use another twelve weeks. That was a concern that we had.
Any questions?
I guess my only question is, would you revert to the state program?
No. Well, everyone wants to stay with what we have.
So you're basically essentially self-insured.
Correct.
Okay, so. Trying to understand the issue. So essentially, you're saying I'm self-insured versus going on a state program. Right, we already have that benefit offered to us through main municipal. And so you're, you're not paying into the state program?
Yes, we are.
Oh, you are?
Yes, we are.
That's the question. We wanted to get the answer, and we couldn't get it through our HR. So they said that we couldn't opt out of it. But I thought we could. So that was, as long as it's after April, right? But whatever, everybody.
Um, could you repeat for me? I'm sorry, what town are you in?
Freeport.
Freeport. Okay, that's what I thought I heard. Thank you. Yes, Jeff?
Does your twelve weeks currently include vacation time, sick leave, et cetera? Or is it?
No.
Only that possibility?
Yep, so.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. There any other in-person? I think we, we have everyone from in-person. Then we will be moving on to our online comments now. So as a reminder, if you want to speak and you are in our online forum, just raise your hand on the Zoom. And we'll call on people as they go. Okay, I can't read that. Sorry. Well, that's, yes, because she has it right down her screen. So we'll call your name after you've raised your hand. And then the, we'll still be doing a three-minute. And it may be difficult for you to see the, the cards warning you of thirty seconds. So I'll try to give you that warning verbally. The first name is Nancy Morris. Nancy?
Hi, I'm Nancy Morris, and you get to see my cat. I'm a resident of Auburn. I'm a retired social worker. Prior to my retirement, I was employed by a large local mental health center in a management position. In the early two thousands, I was dealing with the declining health of my elderly partner and at the same time, the unexpected death of my brother who lived in Ohio at the time. In dealing with both situations and the need to spend some time in Ohio to handle the settlement of my brother's affairs, I needed to take unpaid family leave from the agency. The expenses incurred during this period, still maintaining a home and its mortgage and the cost of travel to Ohio, having a paid family leave option would have been a big help. While I was fortunate to personally have the ability to handle these expenses, I can only wonder how I would have managed if my financial situation was different and my salary was lower than it was. I was glad to see the state enact the paid family and medical leave program, and I see it as an important benefit for both the employee and the employer. I was able to return to my previous job, but employees in a different situation would have had a lot more personal decisions and possible hardships to deal with. And also, in, in the discussion around the hardship, there are some situations that are not negotiable. Somebody pointed out a car accident and the death of my brother. And fortunately, I was part of a large enough organization that they had the ability to cover for my, my absence. But, you know, I want to thank the, the group here for allowing me to speak and for paying attention to what's going on with this, with this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, next, John Austin. John?
Hi, my name is John Costin. I am a resident of Kennebunk, and I own two businesses in Sanford. One is Veneer Services Unlimited. It's a custom architectural woodworking company. The other is New Pioneer LLC. We own and manage an old mill building in Sanford in which my woodworking shop is located. I share the goals of this program. I think it's very important for all workers to have this kind of benefit. However, I have been extremely frustrated with the implementation of it. In particular, I have two businesses to register on the portal. I operate both businesses using the same email address. The web portal for reporting was set up allowing only one company per email address to, to register. So I've only been able to register, report, and pay for one of my companies. When the portal was first set up, I reported this problem to the folks administering the program. They told me they were well aware of the problem and they would solve it. It has not been solved to date. And in particular, I've been frustrated with how it's been dealt with. I have been told that this is the only secure way to run such a portal, which is patently false. The IRS, the Social Security Administration, and every other taxation portal for the state of Maine allows me to report multiple businesses using one email address. I have also been told it's impossible to change the computer architecture of the portal. This is also patently absurd. That's not the way computer code works. Computer code is modified and changed all the time. And lastly, I've been told at the highest levels of leadership that I should simply get another email address for the purpose only of reporting paid family medical leave data, which is kind of frustrating and insulting for someone who fills out close to fifty tax reports a year for a total of two employees. The last suggestion I got was that I should simply use someone else's email address after being told that the reason for this is security. I have taken this to highest leadership at paid family medical leave. I have taken it to my representatives in the legislature. Still, nothing has been done. So I support the goals of the program, but it should be implemented in such a way that employers can do it without an unreasonable burden. And having the suggestion that I simply open another email account so that those who are administering the program don't have to go to the trouble of making the program work is really not an acceptable solution from my perspective. I'm hoping that something will be done.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Next person is Sydney. Sydney? Avita? Sydney? Oh, wait, there you go.
Yeah, I think I wasn't able to unmute, but here I am.
Yes, no, no, we got you. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a quick question. I'm testifying on behalf of myself and also wanted to read testimony for a worker who's not able to be here today and wondered if it's possible for me to do both of those or if I can only do one.
Yes, go ahead with both. Thank you. Three minutes each.
Thank you. I'll start with the other person. So I'm speaking on behalf of a worker named Rachel Stella, who's a twenty-plus-year hospitality worker living in Portland. Rachel says, I am lending my voice to support paid family and medical leave. I could go on about how myself and my coworkers over the years have had to make difficult decisions regarding time off from the non-stop cycle of hospitality work. Many of us have had to grieve family members, miscarriages, loved ones, and abortions while on the job. We have had to recover from surgery, childbirth, and injuries, work-related or not, on the job. We have had to figure out how to care for children, loved ones, and relatives on the job. We have had to navigate our way through intimate partner violence, stalking, mental health struggles, and addiction while on the job. We give ourselves many excuses as to why we are handling our lives in this chaotic way, such as, if I'm working, it will keep my mind off of it and keep me going. But the truth is, we need to stop. Stop to take care of ourselves and our families. And we need the means to do that in a way that doesn't place a financial burden on us. Let's not forget that the reason why many people in the hospitality industry won't take time off for ourselves is because we simply cannot afford to. From what I've seen in this industry, when most people need to take time for themselves or families, it tends to end up that they leave their position. Maine is a food destination city. People come here to eat. In an industry that has been struggling to stay afloat, high turnover is never good for business. Hiring and replacing workers is very expensive. Restaurants and bakeries are only as healthy as their team and the workers who make up that team. People need support to keep doing their job and do so in a way that is bringing their whole selves to the job. When the stress of life happens and we cannot take care of it in a healthy way, our performance fails, our attention span shortens, our memory fails, our nerves are shot, and our emotions are running high. None of this helps in an already high-stress, fast-paced environment. The more we support workers, the healthier they can be, and that reflects in their work and overall well-being. With rising costs of materials, utilities, and property in Maine, I can only see a better future for business owners when we support our workers. They have been and will always be the driving force of the economy, and they deserve the dignity to take care of themselves and their families. Maine's paid leave program is almost there. Workers are contributing to the program, awaiting access to these benefits. And I just wanted to come here to say service workers cannot afford any delays to this lifesaving program. Thank you in advance for stewarding this program to be implemented without delay. Uh, that concludes Rachel Stella's testimony, so I'll move on to mine if that's all right.
Yes, thank Rachel for us for participating, and if you could go ahead.
Thank you. So my name is Sydney Avitia, and I'm a co-director of the Southern Maine Worker Center. We are a small nonprofit with a staff of three, and I'm the person responsible for our administrative operations. It took me about twenty minutes total to sign up for paid family leave on the website for us in January, and it'll probably take me about ten more minutes every quarter to report our wages. Very easy. Just noting, I think there's been a lot of talk of unsophisticated businesses with a staff of three. I think that's, that's totally us, but I, from, from our end, it's actually been really straightforward. As a worker of this, like, I'm a worker and a co-director of this nonprofit. I see eleven dollars and fifty-four cents from my paycheck go to the fund every bi-weekly pay period. And I honestly hadn't even noticed it until I looked at my pay stub this week to check the amount to be able to report it at this hearing. About twenty dollars a month is absolutely nothing compared to the feeling of knowing that I have a safety net during emergencies. And as someone on the backend of the Worker Center as an employer, it's extremely clear to me that having a paid leave program is good for everyone involved. I took two weeks of paid leave myself to recover from a major surgery earlier this summer. This was fully covered by the Worker Center as we've had our own private paid leave policy for years despite having a modest budget. Being a co-director with a staff of three, I know very well what it means to be down a staff person for a few weeks. We've had this happen numerous times during the years I've worked here, and it's not been easy at all to cover our bases while colleagues have been away. However, we've really made it work. And if we can do it as a staff of three, I really believe any employer should be able to do so with the proper planning and care for employees. Finally, as the administrative person at the Worker Center, I was eagerly awaiting for the signup of the program in January. But without the pre-existing knowledge that I held of the program, because we are a workers' rights organization who's involved in the coalition, I could have easily missed it. Substantive, meaningful resources should be invested in education about the program to both employers and employees. We hear from literally hundreds of workers every year who face barriers to accessing well-established benefits because of confusion about their rights. We're sometimes able to help people simply by supporting them to communicate with their employer, explaining that they have learned what their benefits are. But this program will work much, much smoother for all involved if we invest in early and proactive education so that everyone, but especially the employees who will be responsible for requesting their benefits when the time comes is clear from the beginning on how the program works. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sydney. Any questions for Sydney? Thank you very much for your time. Next. Okay, Grace Stinker. Grace?
Yes, hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Great.
Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Grace Stinker. I am on the board of the Southern Maine Worker Center, and I also work in healthcare with older people. And I don't have a whole lot to say today, honestly. Want to remind everyone that millions and millions of dollars are spent daily on unnecessary domestic military operations. Sorry about the text there. And this is a pittance, what we're asking for, honestly. This does not need to be so complicated, like, it really doesn't. And I think it's insulting to assume that, that, you know, the bodies and worker, of workers and our lives are so inconsequential that we keep coming in here and talking about these things. Around this time last year, I had COVID. I got it from the person I was working for, an older woman, and I still had to come into work. and I still had to come into work with COVID because COVID's still real. And the time that I did take off was at the expense of my own. I lost those hours, you know? These programs work. I was once a government employee too, and it was no problem, and that was twenty years ago. So the government employers, the government can do it. They can do it for us. And it's just honestly, it's insulting. Like, I really appreciate all the work that people have put in for this thing. And unfortunately, I don't have a ton of faith moving forward, but I really, I really hope that we can come to some sort of an understanding around this thing because people are actually, we don't want people dying on their jobs. And I actually know someone recently who had someone die at work. And maybe not because of work, but maybe if they had had some time off, they could have been in better shape. Yeah, not really sure what else to say, but just, you know, this, lives are at stake here, like actual human lives are at stake. And I appreciate everyone listening and being here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time today. Any questions? Thank you so much. And the next person is Ronnie Flanner. Ronnie?
Hi. Yeah, my name is Ronnie Flannery. I use they/them pronouns. I am an organizer from Lewiston. I work at the Southern Maine Worker Center. I've been here, but I'm glad to be here again just to say thanks to the department for working so hard to create this program. This is such a hard time to be centering like the long-term well-being of our communities, and it's, I think you're doing a great job. And these public comments, I feel like they really are so important because we have employers, we've always have employers here trying to speak for their employees. And yeah, I just really wanted to start by saying like that those premium rates are so affordable, like between five and six dollars a week, which is less than a Big Mac. And I think when that's communicated clearly, it's really obviously a good deal, which is why it's so important for the department to be amplifying those education efforts this fall. And yeah, I think try to get that information out especially to the gig workers and the part-time workers, the seasonal workers and tipped workers who are also disproportionately, right, are black and brown and immigrant workers and women and queer and trans people who are gonna have the most concerns and questions about how to access. Yeah, like I said, every session we're hearing from employers about their hard experiences. I just think there's nothing radical about expecting Maine-based employers to pay into our state program. And we've gone really above and beyond in the first place to create these private plan loopholes from the beginning. And hearing that, you know, now they want to increase the size of that loophole so that they can, you know, bring a fifty-company conglomeration through it. I mean, I just, I think also the focus on the hardship clause, I think, you know, that's something that we've opposed from the beginning. I think, you know, following the advice of the representative of the chamber, we could be doing what other states have done and model our program just on the success of other states and remove that clause entirely because no other states have that clause. And, you know, we just, we can't allow employers to make the determination. That's why we had to pass the law because employers on their own are not gonna, you know, allow workers to take time off, and scheduling is everything to do with access. Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, to close, to, yeah, just please allow this program to get implemented so it can do what it's supposed to do and keep people employed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie, so much for your time. Is there any questions? Thank you. Okay, the next person is Patty Kitter. Patty?
Thank you. Thank you, honorable members of Paid Family and Medical Leave Authority. My name is Patty Kitter, and I live in Springvale. It's part of the city of Sanford. I'm here today to testify in favor of a strong Paid Family and Medical Leave benefits program for the people of Maine. My family used to own a beautiful marina on Square Pond in Chapley, and I worked there growing up. We were all self-employed, and I was considered a subcontractor. It was the seventies, so it worked until I went away to college. After college, I moved to Portland to start my own career away from the marina. Everything went well at first. My parents hired somebody to help, and everything was going smoothly until my dad got sick in the middle of my first summer away. He couldn't work, and he was the only mechanic. My mom called me in a panic, and I left my job immediately and went back home to the marina and took over my father's position. A Paid Family and Medical Leave benefit program at that time would have helped me and my parents through that difficult time. Because the marina was a seasonal business, I needed a winter job to help pay bills. I started working preparing income taxes for one of our customers. I soon started my own income tax business, which I still own and operate today. In nineteen ninety, while self-employed, both preparing taxes and mechanical work with my parents, I got pregnant with our first child. I was thirty-one years old, and at the end of my first trimester, I started spotting. My doctor told me I needed to rest. I did, and it stopped. I started working again, and the spotting came back, so my doctor put me on bedrest. But I was self-employed. If you didn't work, you had no money to pay your bills. If you didn't work, nothing would get done. My self-employment was seasonal, so you didn't have more time to do the work later. You can't postpone summer, and everyone wants their boat. The spotting stopped again, and we thought everything was going to be okay. A few weeks later, I thought I had bad heartburn like many other pregnant women, but I was wrong. I was in labor, and my husband had to rush me to the hospital where our only son was stillborn. If I, if Maine had Paid Family and Medical Leave, then I would have rested. But like so many small business owners, I couldn't afford to. I had to keep working. There were deadlines to meet and bills to pay. My husband's grief was so immense that he had a mental health breakdown and had to be hospitalized. But I, as a small business owner, still had to work. And truly, I gave birth to my stillborn son at seven-thirty that morning, and I was waiting on customers by two-thirty that afternoon. No one should ever have to go back to work the same day a beloved family member dies. No one should have to choose between their health or caring for a loved one when having enough money to pay their bills. I went on to have two beautiful, healthy daughters, but we knew any pregnancies I were going to have were going to be risky, and I was going to need long-term paid sick leave. We knew that while I was self-employed, it wasn't an option. My husband and I had to make a decision. Did we want to continue living on Square Pond with me being self-employed at the marina? Or did we want to leave in order for me to be a children? Again, if Maine had Paid Family and Medical Leave, I would have taken the time I needed and then gone back to work. Instead, I had to leave my family's cherished business, and they eventually had to sell it. We shouldn't have to make the kind of decisions when we need to take care of ourselves and our families. That's why I'm glad that we have finally figured out how Maine can have Paid Family and Medical Leave system that all Mainers deserve. I'm asking you, please support a strong Paid Family and Medical Leave benefits program. And thank you so much for your time, and I'll do my best to answer any questions.
We appreciate hearing your story, Patty. Any questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And I know nobody wants to pay for it, but I guarantee when you need it, you're all gonna want it.
Thank you. Okay, next person is Carrie. Carrie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Carrie Jaded. I am a community organizer for Maine People's Alliance, and I am here to speak on behalf of our thirty-two thousand members across Maine. Within an hour of the birth of our second child, my spouse took advantage of the early hour to make a work call to a colleague in Europe. He taught his usual classes a few hours later. This is the reality for so many workers, particularly in professions and industries that have not traditionally included people who birth and provide care for family members. In 2023, the Labor Committee received more than one hundred and seventy-five pieces of testimony from the public outlining the immense need for a Paid Family and Medical Leave program. And again this year, members of the public testified for some eight hours to defend the program. Most of these people are working today and can't take the time to repeat themselves, but they are expecting the program to begin next year as promised. Let's take a moment to hear again some of the reasons Mainers have given for why this program is urgently needed, and you've heard some of these already. To take time off when incapacitated by a hernia, and for a spouse who needed to help that person take care of herself, get to appointments and care for children. To be with a spouse as she died from cancer. To be with a child as they faced cancer. To be able, as a small business owner, to offer paid leave to employees as they deal with major medical issues. To care at once for a mother with dementia and a newborn child. To care for a spouse with multiple medical issues. Lawmakers have heard from the owner of a small trucking business who has never been able to take any leave, not for the birth of his three children, nor for a medical emergency for his youngest child. They have heard from a couple who are both self-employed while facing the realities of the sandwich generation. They have heard from someone who had to leave his job because he couldn't take enough time off to recover from a mental health crisis. People have needed this program for years, have been born, worked, retired, and died without the statutory acknowledgement that the workers who are the foundation of our economy are humans, not automatons that merely need occasional oiling or retuning. We're almost there, and it is exciting that Maine's workers are finally about to have their due. We understand that you are receiving requests to consider legislative changes to the program. We at MPA also hold some concerns that some of the rules will make it challenging for employees to access the program. However, we believe that for the sake of the implementation process, those concerns should wait to see exactly what is borne out when the program begins in full. We ask you to save the course and resist making any changes that could delay implementation or complicate enrollment for the people who need it most. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
The next person is Cassie Nedwell.
Cassie?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Perfect. Hi, I'm Cassie Nedwell. I'm from Cape Elizabeth. I just wanted to say real quick, I'm a mom of three. I'm in grad school. I work per diem. I've been working since I was fifteen. I've worked in healthcare, mental health, childcare, food service. Over the years, I've had three kids. I've had one miscarriage in my second term. My husband was deployed for a year. I've had two surgeries, and I've had a lot of sicknesses. And throughout those, I have had the privilege of getting paid time off for myself one single time for six weeks. I just wanted to say that I am so excited for the future of Maine. I'm so excited for my kids, and I'm also excited for myself for the opportunity to be able to experience this benefit or even just knowing that it's there to alleviate the stress of not having it there. And I also just wanted to thank you all so much for all the work you're doing. It's a super, super stressful and difficult time right now. There are a lot of unknowns. So being able to have things like Paid Family and Medical Leave to look forward to is truly a little piece of hope in this sea of chaos. That was all. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Cassie, for providing your time today. Is that, are we good? Okay, if there's any other people online who would like to speak, just a reminder to raise your hand.
I don't know if the rest of the drawing numbers are in sync. I almost see Maria.
There's someone with a raised hand.
She's the only one with a camera on?
Yeah.
Oh, is that what it is? Maybe. Oh, okay.
I think there was a person waiting to speak.
Yeah, it looks like it's this.
Jack. Okay, Jack is the next person. Jack?
Bjorn?
Can everyone hear me all right?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Jack. Your patience.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning, members of the PML Authority and the Maine Department of Labor. My name is Jack Bajorn, and I'm an attorney at Pierce Atwood in Portland, Maine. Thank you for offering this opportunity for the public to raise questions and make comments about the Paid Family and Medical Leave program, which is set to begin paying benefits next year. I appreciate the efforts that the ME DOL and the PML Authority have made to date with respect to getting the program up and running, including preparation and publication of the final rule, employee and employer-focused FAQs, and numerous other resources that are all geared toward making this program run as smoothly as possible. That being said, I have
Jack, do you mind slowing down just a bit for our interpreters?
Absolutely. You'll forgive me that I have a fair amount of substance to cover this morning. And I'm hoping to just try to squeeze it all in, but I will do my best to slow down. I have a few questions for you that I'm hoping you might be able to address before full program implementation next year. As a bit of background, the questions stem from a timekeeping issue that one of our clients is anticipating at the start of the program and the interplay between federal unpaid, state unpaid, and state-paid family and medical leave. In a recent call with the TPA or broker, the broker informed the client that because of the employer's timekeeping practices and leave policies, the employer will not be able to run federal unpaid FML and Maine PML concurrently without being in violation of either federal or state statutory or regulatory framework. Specifically, first, we are hoping that the ME DOL can provide more guidance and examples regarding how it interprets Section 850B11 regarding PML running concurrently with state and federal unpaid family and medical leave. As we read the statute and applicable guidance, there are clear examples of when the different types of leave will not overlap. For example, an employee that takes twelve weeks of PML to care for a grandchild would be able to take an additional twelve weeks of unpaid leave for the employee's own serious health condition under federal FMA in the same benefit year. However, we are less clear on how leave will run concurrently if and when, one, the employee becomes eligible for one type of leave while taking another; two, the employee takes twelve weeks of unpaid FML prior to May 1, 2026, and then wants or needs to take PML after May 1, 2026, all within the same twelve-month period; or three, similar to number two, sometime in the more distant future, the employee takes twelve weeks of federal unpaid FML for a personal serious health condition, but then wishes to take PML for a grandchild safe leave or some other reason that doesn't overlap with the permitted reasons for leave under federal law, theoretically giving up to twenty-four weeks of combined leave time. Can the Maine Department of Labor please provide some clarity as to how the unpaid FML and PML programs will interact in such circumstances? Second, we are hoping that the ME DOL can address an apparent conflict between state and federal law. Specifically, Section 850B5 regarding intermittent leave requirements states that leave permitted by the section may not or may be taken by an employee intermittently in increments of equaling not less than one day or on a reduced leave schedule otherwise agreed to by the employee and or on a reduced leave schedule otherwise agreed to by the employee and the employer, except that the employee and employer may not agree for leave to be taken in increments of less than one hour. The taking of leave intermittently or on a reduced leave schedule pursuant to this subsection may not result in a reduction in the total amount of leave to which the covered individual is entitled under the subchapter. Under the related PFML final rule, section three B two, the final rule similarly states that the minimum increment is a scheduled workday or a smaller increment as agreed to by the employee and employer, but may not be less than one hour. The rule goes on to state an employer is not required to agree to allow the use of increments of less than a scheduled workday. However, under the federal regulations covering federal FMLA, uh, see twenty-nine CFR section eight-two-five dot two oh five, the regs state that when an employee takes FMLA on an intermittent or reduced leave schedule basis, the employer must account for the leave using an increment of no greater than the shortest period of time that the employer uses to account for other forms of leave, provided that it is not greater than an hour, and provided further that the employee's FMLA leave may not be reduced by more than the amount of leave actually taken. Here, the issue becomes if the employer uses increments smaller than an hour for PTO, vacation, and sick time, federal regulations require that the employer provide unpaid FML in those same, same increments that are smaller than an hour. Therefore, federal law directly conflicts with Maine's paid family and medical leave law unless an employer uses one hour increments for all types of leave. Furthermore, even if an employer uses one hour increments for PTO, the statute and final rule, which default to eight hour increments and which allow for private plan substitutions to use four hour increments, still seemingly violate the federal regulations. I suspect that the one hour minimum increment in the PFML Act and final rule is intended to allow the Maine Department of Labor to more easily administer the program and keep track of PFML time. But the one hour minimum increments prevents employers from being able to comply with federal law. As such, in terms of implementation of the PFML program, if employers are required to provide federal unpaid FML in increments of fifteen or thirty minutes, as may be dictated by a federal contract, as is, as is the case here, is the ME DOL still only going to pay PFML benefits in one hour increments? Additionally, if that is
You're out of time. Um, so, uh, I think, I think we, uh, you're expressing some concerns about intermittent leave and how these different leaves interact. If anybody on the authority um, has any questions for Jack. Uh, Jenny has a question for you?
Yes, I'm wondering if Jack could make sure he provides these questions and comments in written form or an email to us so that we can actually make sure we attend to all of those questions and give them thought and process.
Um, Jen?
I will just note that a couple of weeks ago, I provided, uh, the first four questions, um, that I had, uh, to Maria Fox, the Authority Chair. Um, so she has those. I did have two, like, one to two sentence issues that I wanted to add regarding, uh, the undue hardship. Um, and, uh, how the ME DOL plans to issue, uh, guidance about retaliation or discrimination with respect to the PFML program. Um, but I'm happy to provide those, uh, directly to Maria as well to share with the group.
So, sorry, this is Maria Fox. I did, I did receive them. I can circulate them and, and the authority could accept them as if, um, as if Jack were present and providing, you know, written testimony. I think that was what, um, Luke had advised, uh, to do rather than circulated ahead, um, to, to have Jack come and speak before the group and then provide written testimony at that time should he desire to do so in addition. So, I can, I can circulate that and, and Jack, it sounds like you have something in addition that you, you want me to circulate?
If, if you, yeah, if you don't mind, I have about three sentences here, just, uh, maybe four, asking a couple of questions about the undue hardship or, uh,
Can you just say, can you just email that to me? Um, email it all together in one?
Yep.
And then I can forward it to the group sort of as, as if you were there live passing it out.
Perfect. I can definitely do that. I'll do that as soon as I log off, but thank you very much for your time. I, I definitely appreciate all of your attention to some of these issues and, uh, all the work that you've done, um, and getting the PFML program up and running.
Thank you.
Jack? Okay, that looks like, um, everybody who had their hand raised in the zoo. And, uh, there aren't any additional people here, uh, behind that person. So, uh, we are going to move to the, um, meeting portion, but we're gonna take a, a short break before doing that for the members. Um, so it is ten thirty-seven. Um, everyone's good with meeting back here at ten fifty. And we'll get started on the meeting portion of the morning.
Okay.
Want this closed?
Uh, no, you can leave it open.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody. Thank you. I hope that break was sufficient. This is the meeting portion of our meeting today. So let's see. And Maria recommended that we're going to be discussing the feedback from the comment period, time period, and whether the authority plans to advance any ideas for potential future legislation, or if there's just anything we want to talk about that we've heard during the comments that we'd like to, you know, learn more about or get clarification on or any of that type of thing. So this is like kind of a free form part of the meeting. If anybody wants to start us off, Jenny does. Thank you.
Sorry. I just, before we get into like the meat of some of the more detail oriented comments, one of the tenants that came up a few times was forward looking and wanting to make sure that we, we look at things, we study the, the actual results and how things happen. Is it appropriate or possible for us as an authority to declare a commitment to monitoring how things go and then making sure that we, we take into consideration how the proceeds lays that plays out and that we commit to making sure that we examine opportunities to to perfect the process as well. Is there, I just feel like it's, we all feel that that's what we're gonna do, but I don't know if it's possible or beneficial that we commit to that publicly. And I just don't know if that's something for us to do or if that's more of a that you feel anything that we just don't get into.
Um.
I think it's in our charter. It's in this catch group.
I know it is, but we've heard plenty of people come up with concerns that we, we aren't gonna do it. That's the only thing.
Um, I would say that it's possible that we could brainstorm a list of things proactively in advance that we're interested in being reported on on a regular basis, like we might want to see certain statistics quarterly or of some such thing. And it would probably be easier for the department to provide us this information if we were upfront before, you know, things started happening about what we were looking for. So if there were things that we were interested in understanding better as, as the plan rolled out in an implementation phase now that we're closer to that time period.
I like that. I think especially when it comes to things like hardship and such, those are things that we would be hesitant as a group to make a decision today and change something, would suggest a change, but because we want to know how this plays out, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
I would just like to interject on that. I, I am in favor of collecting the data and, and all of it, but I, in thinking about the undue hardship and some of the comments that we heard, I sort of curi-, I mean, if, I, I think there's a, I'm just wondering the limits of, or how we can get the best data. Because I think it sounded like, at least from the Chamber of Commerce's perspective, if the data reveals that people are not making requ-, making undue hardship requests, that that necessarily means that it's too complicated or it's, you know, inaccessible for folks, whereas it may be that employers and employees are, are working it out on their own, which I think the, the intent of the, the rules, you know, through the rulemaking process, I think that was changed to try to give guidance for employers and employees to work these scheduling things out on their own. I'm just wondering, you know, if there's some way to capture that data. I don't know if, I don't know if people have ideas about that, but that would be interesting to know, but it's, it's much harder, I think, to get at that versus how many people have contacted the department specifically and, you know, appeal the decision and, and all of that. So I'll just.
I, to answer that, Maria, I don't know if Reggie has an opinion on this. Like when someone submits a claim, you know, there's a certain process for that. I wonder if there is an ability to be proactive about questions we ask them when they submit the claim and not just the particulars of, you know, how to, like what the claim is for and that type and how much time it's for, but also like, did you have, you know, conversations with your employer prior to X, X, Y? Some of those kinds of questions on a, when on a claim submission basis may get at that.
Well, I'd like to go for, if one of the employers is repeatedly saying hardship, 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 hardship. Now, if it's a seasonal person, then he's, it's every June, it's the same deal. And I'd say, yeah, he's got a reasonable thing, but if every time it's, it's hardship, every time somebody applies, it's fine.
Yep.
I suppose too, the way, my memory serves, the way this is set up, so there's a time period, employee makes the claim, there's a time period to, to make the claim for undue hardship, and then if that maybe goes away, ma-, maybe then there's, I don't know if.
Follow-up?
Follow-up or, y- y- you know, to see, but maybe that data is, is interesting. Does it go away because it's too complicated? Or does it go away because they've worked it out? But I guess you'd have to get people to be willing to sort of voluntarily provide that additional information. So I don't know what's in the capability of data gathering from the department. I don't know if, if Reggie or, is, is Luke there today too? I don't.
No, Luke is not here, but I can, I can answer definitely the, the undue hardship piece. So we have built in the rule where if there is no undue hardship that exists between the worker and the employer, they can sign a waiver, which will eliminate that type of concern about undue hardship and the claim can continue to move forward. But another thing about undue hardship in the rule is that the notice does have to kind of lay out some other important information such as, you know, the, the reason for the leave, the type of leave that's needed, the anticipation and the duration, and then any other information that the employee might think is relevant. But the conversation that does need to happen, I do believe needs to be in writing because, yeah, for example, you know, the employer has provided a written explanation on why the undue hardship exists. So there is ways to document that if there is some conflict that the administrator, which also to clarify, I know there were some things about the department doing it, so the administrator will make that determination on whether an undue hardship exists. And they will take into account the facts and then hopefully that's been documented in writing. And then another thing to clarify about what the outcome could be, because I know that's something we've gotten questions about, isn't it, doesn't mean a denial. It does not mean a denial leave. What it means in, in the worst case scenario is that the employee might not be able to take their leave in the timeframe that they asked for. They might have to take it based on the employer's proposed schedule. So there, there will be some, again, ways to document all of that in writing, but assuming that, that worker is eligible for leave and they met our, all our other requirements, they're able to ask for the leave and whether they can take it on their time will all depend on, again, the administrator and the facts that they, they get absent a waiver.
Is it possible? I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I just had a follow-up question on the mechanics of that, because that's your talking. Everything seems very after the fact, like, you know, mom's having a baby, right? And you guys are duking out whether it's hardship or not, right? And so is there a way to create like a checklist? Is the administrator gonna have a checklist that says you meet these criteria, it's approved, that a, that employer could know? Like, we know in advance that this is likely gonna be okay. I'm also thinking of those that are privately insured. How are they gonna know? Because if you have to go back to the state administrator for all this decision-making and you have a private plan, how does, how do all those things sync up?
Yeah.
Timely?
Judy, I don't know if you want to talk about the private plan piece on undue hardship, but.
So for private plans with fully insured plans, they purchase an insurance policy and therefore the insurance company stands in the shoes of our administrator.
Okay.
So that insurance company would complete the same process that our administrator would use in administering the claim. They get the claim, there's a claim of undue hardship, they would determine the reasonableness and determine, make determinations of the schedule, but again, they would be determining whether or not the employee is eligible for the paid leave and what the benefit amount would be. Similarly, with a self-insured plan, the majority of the 88 approved plans have hired a third-party claims administrator that is licensed by the Maine Bureau of Insurance. And those claims administrators, like our administrator, would receive those claims and would apply the law and the rule appropriately. If there's a claim of undue hardship, they would, they would apply the same criteria that our administrator would apply. There are a handful of employers who have decided to administer internally their own claims. And so I think that's where perhaps it gets a little tricky, but that's where our audit responsibilities can come into play to make sure that they are making claims decisions that are consistent with the laws and books of laws.
So out of that would come sort of a set of precedent rules that apply across all these different types of plans for reference or not?
Um, I, we, the law and the rule are guides for all these administrators to make sure that they adhere to them. If there are appeals from claims decisions or appeals because there was a determination that a claim of undue hardship was not reasonable, for example. My recollection, I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection is that either the law or the rule says that our appeal decisions in some instances can be identified as precedential. So that would provide, it would gen-, potentially.
Someone would have access to see this precedence. Like, again, I'm just sort of concerned, I'm thinking way ahead, like what happens? We got all these different plans. How are we gonna have consistent rulemaking and understanding of what the rules become?
Yes, so if I can jump in there, so if something becomes a precedent setting, it would become part of our guidance that would be published. And it may be, depending on the situation, something we want to incorporate into a round of the making. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Oh. Sorry, David, go ahead.
I have a kid, not me, but my son has a kid this year, only because I'm gonna be a grandfather soon. And, and he takes three months paternity leave and he's with a 15 or less employer company. The same situation with a, a company 20 employees. So the 20 employee will be granted, the 15 would say, wait a minute, I got a, I got a hardship. You can't take this for another four weeks. Whether 20 would, would be allowed to do it. Am I, am I kind of feeling that?
If the, if the smaller employer has determined reasonably that that is an undue hardship, that is correct.
Okay.
That's a smaller employer could say, hey, okay. And that was like the waiver that Reggie was referring to. They just signed off and said, we agree.
Okay.
And I think as far as reporting purposes, you know, we can track how many waivers did we receive? How many appeals did we get where, and what was the outcome? Was it undue hardship or not? So there are other, there are things that we can count and so we have some quantitative information and qualitative, if, if you will, that we can look at going forward on how undue hardship is working.
And we'll be able to look at repeats from both employers and employees?
Yes.
Okay. That's great, because I, you know, I'm still concerned. I say this, I'm concerned about fraud and, and this stuff, you know. I, I heard a comment about stacking 12 and 12 when you get 24 weeks and you say, was that possible? But it doesn't appear to be possible, but when you put federal EMFL or state PM, pay family, it can get, yeah, you can get up there.
I think that, I think some of that kind of stuff, I mean, whether there's already guidance written for it, but I mean, I, I, as an employer, I'd be very confused by how all that stacks, you know?
Yeah.
Having some guidance to understand it better with examples or something like that would probably be helpful for both employers and employees. Jenny, but Maria, did you have something earlier?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm wondering, in terms of the data gathering, is the department, I mean, I, I guess I've, I've heard from prior meetings that the department is planning to track certain data. What I'm wondering is can the authority see what the department is planning to track and potentially provide input on what information we would like to see if, if there is anything in addition to what the department's already planning to track and discuss ways that that can be accomplished?
I think we can have that conversation. Yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't know what the reports are coming out. I mean, my, my feeling is if it's going into the system, we can query on it, so, but that's something we can certainly discuss.
I agree that, oh, sorry, Maria, but that, knowing what we're looking for in advance, because sometimes querying data is not as easy as you think it should be.
Exactly.
Go ahead, Ryan.
That, no, I was just agreeing with, with you, Tina, that that's, that, that's what I've found is that sometimes after the fact, you have some questions and it's like, well, we didn't track for that or our system can't provide that information, but perhaps if we knew ahead of time that this was something we were interested in tracking, it could be set up in advance.
Jenny, you had something?
Well, I was also just curious if there was an idea that it's possible that we would hear anecdotal data as well from, say, Hospitality Maine and the Chamber of Commerce. I, is it safe to say that they probably would offer us anecdotal information that would add to it, though anecdotal? I mean, is, is it, am I right in assuming that? Yeah, okay. So I mean, we, we should have a robust amount of information as long as we get the information we need from the state, correct?
Well, we'll keep having public comment periods, right? There's public comment meetings once a year or twice a year? Once a year.
At least once, I think, is our charge, but we can do it more frequently. My concern about, I mean, anecdotal, I think, can be super helpful, you know, like, but it also can be helpful to have the counterpoint, you know, someone might have an example about hardship, but is that sort of, is it, is it a widespread problem? Was this a unique, you know, a unique situation? Was there more of the story than what was, you know, than what was relayed? You know, there's just a lot of question about anecdotal on its, on its own, even though I think it can be, it can be very helpful. I think it's really important to hear from people directly about their specific experiences.
Uh, yes, Jake?
So I have two questions, maybe one you can't answer, and, and that is, what's the problem with multiple small businesses purchasing, oh, yeah, as this surety bonds separate but using a volume discount? Maybe you can't comment on pending litigation.
That is correct.
The second is, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around the 120 days that the hospitality made, and so as long as an employee satisfies rule section 4A subsection 2, which is the earn wages paid to state six times the state weekly average first four and the last five completed calendar quarters, if they move to a new job, they can take, the day after they start that new job, they can request family medical leave or medical leave, correct?
Right, and to, because, yeah, because I knew it came up in the legislature to, so the 120 days kick in when it comes to job protections. So if that worker's been with that company for, you know, 120 days or even longer, assuming that they're eligible for the leave, they can take their leave and return back to that job or something equivalent under the scenario if, you know, somebody needed to take leave on day three, they just started a new job, again, assuming they're eligible, they could take the benefit, but they won't be guaranteed the job protection.
So, yeah, what do you mean? Like, so, so let's say I have employer, you know, Steve's Barbers, and someone comes on. And um someone comes on, I hire him, three days later, they request leave. Um. Could I not? Uh could I tell them not that that not to come back or only if it extends beyond a certain period of time?
So that might be something that's, see, and that was Sarah was here, but the on the benefits part of it, we would probably have to probably clarify that more. Kind of what happens after the fact, or we've just been explaining to people upfront what happens if that situation was to occur. But I think we could probably.
I don't, I would have just said yes. If it's day three.
Yes, you tell them, oh, I'm really sorry and don't come back. We're gonna take. That second selection, the person that ran to in our interview process, we're gonna hire them instead. Yes, okay, you're able to do that because they don't have job protection. And they can still file claims.
Claims is a big system.
Yes, because their claim is still there because they filed the claim while they were employed. And after they filed the claim, yeah, they, so, yes.
And does that hold true with you?
Leave, but not really.
If you went from a uh uh employer that participated in the state program to an employer that has their own. Uh uh their own.
Plan.
Plan.
Those, the rules are universal.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
But if it's a private plan. Is the money coming out of their money or is the money coming out of?
Oh, right, the employer follows the employee up to a point. That's a good point.
That's right, all more reasoning, same plan. It's it's universal. The rules are universal.
So they would have, that employee would have paid for ten years under the state program. Taken their lead, taken leave under a new employer that self funds.
Yep.
It gets paid from the state plan or the employee of?
Whatever plan they are covered by when they file.
But they have to be covered from day one. There there's no waiting period to be covered.
So how does the money flow? If I'm in a private plan and I go to another employer who also has a private plan. Where does the money come from?
Whoever they're employed by at the time they make the claim.
Okay, so then I'm not gonna, I'm gonna discriminate against people I'm hiring. Because if they have a fully funded plan already, I'm on the hook for something that.
I would talk to a lawyer before. Song, because that would be retaliation.
I I get it. Obviously, I get that. I'm just pointing out, I think it's a problem.
You figure there's there's uh works on both ends. You could have someone join your your company.
If I'm an employer that's, you know, hiring someone, how do I plan for that? Right? You you you're playing, we're planning for the state fund. We get that. We wanna make sure we have enough money in the state coffers. But if I'm a private plan and I'm looking at hiring people and I hire a bunch of people that happen to already be fully eligible. How do I ensure that I have enough money in the bank for that or that? Yeah, I get it. Oh, yeah, but.
And and the and this is, this is Kim. It it's, that's the the essence of insurance, really. And you you can be something, it could be their first job anywhere and on week two, they get in a car accident.
Yeah, but I guess my point is I don't think most employers do this right now. They really don't. I mean, I've been running around trying to make this point along with workforce planning. Because nobody's planning for, you need to have alternate butcher rather than deny people the ability to take a leave.
But the person who only has a new job is has not paid into the plan previously wouldn't be eligible. Cause they wouldn't have worked for the six quarters of the right.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be from a new employer, correct, for sure, but.
But they could be on, you know, day eighty nine and have an accident. So they need the six weeks of earnings. And they've, they still haven't paid in enough, I guess, if that's what you're asking.
I think that is point of insurance.
I did wanna just mention that I I forwarded, uh I I received uh Jack Jorn's uh written testimony. And I did circulate it by email for those of you who wanted to take a look at that.
Did we talk quickly about transition year? And I I've had a conversation yesterday with someone and she was mentioning that. If someone takes a four week leave this year or up early next year, right? And they go out on leave in July. That four weeks is deducted from the twelve available.
Isn't there their benefit year, the day they take, the first day they take the leave?
Then it's on the Sunday before the day they take their leave and then.
So the year, it's a moving year. It's not a calendar year.
I would have to look to Reggie or Judy though, but we have a one year look back, right?
So even if they, it's not a paid, it wasn't a paid period, it was unpaid. But that gets deducted from.
So what what the rule says, so I'm just gonna read it.
Thank you.
And not interpret it. The twelve weeks of aggregate leave taken under this act. Will be reduced by any leave taken under twenty nine USC blah blah blah. That's the the federal leave. Or leave under the other state unpaid family leave. That was not taken concurrently with leave under this act in the twelve month period preceding the sort of leave. So now I'm gonna just say that again, the twelve weeks of aggregate leave taken under pay PFML is reduced. By federal leave that was not taken concurrently in the twelve month period preceding the sort of leave.
So we have a one year.
A one year look back.
Family medical leave. And then you come to PFML after the program starts, you would only be entitled to eight weeks if it's within that. If it's one year prior to your application date.
For what's considered eligible leave under both. So the 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 um. The uniqueness of this main plan, the the other affiliate affinity relationship, which is not eligible under the federal law. Right? So you could, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you said you weren't gonna interpret Nancy, but if if federal paid leave. Twelve weeks for yourself. And affinity relationship on the main paid family medical, which is not eligible for federal, is twelve weeks by itself. That's twenty four potential weeks of leave or do they also?
Any leave.
Any.
Any leave that was taken under the federal law. The twelve weeks of aggregate, because the same way, we don't look at, you took. You took leave to have a baby versus you took leave, family leave as you tell medical, so any leave under this act is reduced by any leave under federal.
Within the year.
Within the year.
So we're in the.
Different.
Because, I mean, essentially, the program starts May first.
Right.
But the leave starts, the the whenever the year look back starts when they, when that person starts their leave.
Right, but if somebody applied May first, we would look back to May from just May first of this.
So, yes, you, yes, we're in the look back.
We're in the possibly in the look back, depending on when someone submits a claim. So I would think that maybe because people's decisions they are making today. May affect their ability to take leave after May first, but but employees may not be aware of that. Possibility. They may be making decisions today that they think won't be affected. When they try to take leave in June of next year. Um and I wonder if there is some kind of education we should be doing about that. Cause I can see there being, I don't wanna say um complaints, but unhappy. Um people who submit a claim in June. Because they didn't understand that the leave they took. Before the program benefits started affects the leave they're allowed to take in June. And that's very confusing for someone. Um and I could see there being problems if. You know, people just don't understand that.
That's a good point.
Um maybe some education.
That's a great point. I mean, we we heard in public comments sort of education, education, education for employees and employers. Um, I mean, I know the department is. Has has education plans. I don't know if this is um. I don't know if, um, I mean, certainly probably more education can be, can always be done, but um. I don't know if this is a good time to get a a brief report about what's to come. I know there's gonna be some ramping up of education in particular for employees. Right? Because as as benefits, we get sooner to uh make benefits available for employees. Is that right, Reggie?
Yeah, and I, but I see Sarah's hand on it. I can, I can answer, but I can.
Well, my, I just wanted to add something that you can answer to probably. And that is, I just had a recommendation from the one of the uh participants today about what's to add to education. And that is, when the woman from uh Springville was talking about, she was using, she could have used her leave. To go do her father's job, making it clear that it's caregiving leave only. And that how you're gonna police that if if you are at all.
Important.
Because she, again, and that's what a lot of people will be faced with. When you go to sort of rescue a family member, you're gonna be faced with a whole bunch of stuff. What constitutes caregiving leave versus what constitutes other things you're allowed to do and be paid for it.
I can answer a little bit of that on the on the family leave side, uh but I know on the public education side. Um so Ethos is going to be our marketing firm. We went through a competitive bid process and we chose them. Um so the plan is this fall, we'll be working with them on developing the type of messaging that we wanna put out about paid leave. Which definitely will include undue hardship um for sure. And to educate workers and employers and then also elected folks who can elect coverage um about the program. So all of that will be happening this fall. Our goal um tentatively is to put all of that stuff out. The in January, in early January, I wanna say the third week of January. Um and that campaign will run from January until July, so folks will have enough. And there will be obviously education in between with webinars, you know, led by the department and going out there and and speaking to folks. But that campaign should last about six months, so folks should have more education, especially if they're going after to, you know, apply for benefits. Um and on the, on the family, on the family leave part. Um again, I don't wanna overstep on Sarah's toes, but assuming if someone needed to take leave for a family member. There will be proof that needed, that that needs to happen in order to be um qualified for that leave. So we will definitely make sure there's proper documentation and it's noted why you're taking the leave and not to just, you know, go run. The businesses for caregiving.
I can't believe I mean, they're gonna say this, but. So it it's just when you happen to say it, how do you educate people so they don't get surprised? So does that mean that my son doesn't take any kind of paternity leave now? When the baby's born, the baby's gonna be born next month, this month. Does he say, I'm gonna take my paternity leave in June? Is that the kind of education we're talking about?
What is your subject trying to do? Take care of the baby or take care of taking the leave? That's the question you'll have to ask.
Right, and and what is the question? I I I I'm entitled to paternity leave to spend time with my newborn child, right?
Yeah, that's bonding leave, not caregiving leave.
So that doesn't qualify.
No, he should be able to take it when he needs to.
Right. Oh, so so he can either take it now unpaid.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't know about this.
I'm tossing this out as a hypothetical.
Well, yes, he needs to, he needs to weigh the fact that if he takes it now, it will be unpaid. And it will deplete the total he is allowed to take later as paid.
I don't think asking his wife or partner to keep the baby inside is a option.
I understand that she will be taking the full leave that he is entitled. But the question is, does he go back to work and take leave in June?
Most that I see do it staggered like that. Oh, yeah, so it's very like the baby bonding leave happens immediately for the birthing parents.
To your point, how do you, how do you educate? And and is that the thing you want to educate us? You know, you, if you wanna spend time with a kid, now you do it. But I get the the pity thing is.
Well, it gives more flexibility in marriage that way, right?
I think the whole one year look back needs to be fully articulated to employers and employees.
Let's decide what's best for them. That's not our, you know, no, that's no one else's job except for them to understand what's best for them. Um but they need to have all the information in front of them to be able to make those important decisions.
And it could be an FAQ on her website without much trouble.
Right, yeah, that is.
This isn't about prescribing, it's about providing options and but making sure that they're aware of their options.
We, I also want to, oh, sorry.
On that note, Reggie, dude, I mean, you mentioned like with working with Ethos. I mean, is this issue of? The interplay between paid family and medical leave and then the unpaid federal and state family. And medical leave, will that be included so that people have that information? I think it's really important for. I think I think that's a, it could be a source of of great confusion, especially as the program gets rolled out. For the reasons that we're talking about right now. Do you know if that's gonna be part of the, part of the campaign?
It it's certainly, we can definitely raise it with them and we just have to make sure as a department, we, if we do message it. How do we phrase it so we don't create more confusion?
Oh, yeah.
But that is because it is because we've had gotten a lot of questions about this particular issue, but yeah, we're definitely gonna broadcast it, which is something we'll. Definitely take back and and see how we can, Ethos can help us phrase it in a way that's understandable.
Can we just add, cause I, I think I've mentioned this in the past, is also figuring out, cause we seem to focus on employer plans. We're not talking about the self insured plans, like the individuals. So the interplay between if I've got three businesses, like I tap my trees and I'm on the craft circuit and I also have a regular job. How do I, you know, bring all those, that money together and make a whole leave?
Right.
You know, if I've got multiple accounts.
Right, which, yeah, we can, we can raise it with them, cause there will be some, and there will inevitably be the interplay between. The private plan and the state plan, cause workers will move.
Well, no, I'm, well, yeah, there's that, but I'm I'm more talking about the fact that individuals can have their own plan. We tend to focus in this meeting more on the employer plans, but. There's plenty of people that have businesses on the side that may also, I don't know what you.
Well, they would have to choose to join the plan though, cause they're now they're self.
No, 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 I'm talking about, remember, there's this whole other category that we kinda don't really talk about in this group. For some reason, I don't know, which was individuals can have a plan. So if you work for a company and then you also have your own business, you can have two accounts, right?
I, I, was this the town of Freeport? Was this the Freeport?
No, this is just a general statement about the way the law is written that allows for individuals to have plans if they've got other.
We might be able to clarify that maybe in an FAQ per se, but I don't know.
Well, I don't even know what your enrollment looks like on that. I mean, having a lot of people. They just don't know this exists.
Would people who have a plan at work, if they're a member, if they have, they're paying in at a work plan. What is the benefit to them of also creating a self-employed plan?
Well, somebody thought it was.
Well, they have a maximum amount they're allowed to take.
In my opinion only, it would be if the if the cover job didn't provide enough income for a high enough benefit. Then they could opt to cover themselves as a self-employed individual. And if they need to leave, then have a higher weekly benefit amount.
Because they're making more money and contributing.
Doesn't entitled to additional weeks. It's still twelve weeks for the one person, but the weekly benefit couldn't be higher.
Okay, do we have any data at all on how many people are enrolling as individuals?
We have had a few, but I, um, we can provide that, yeah.
I just feel feel like not a lot of people know about it, including us.
Well, and also there are a lot of people, um, I think the other FAQ um that will end up happening once benefits come into play. Is, um, for example, I have a lot of part-time workers and, I mean, a lot, I don't have a lot of workers in total. But um half my workers are part-time and they also have full-time jobs. So they're paying into the plan for me, uh but they're also paying in at their full-time employer. And I think people, I mean, people are gonna uh have, like, they're just gonna not understand how the things play together. Um and how to report correctly and how to submit their claims correctly, you know, I'm sure that'll be part of the planning process. Of like, you know, do you have multiple?
A claim when you work for more than one.
Yeah, yes.
Because we'd also talked before that there's potentially people who. Like perhaps all with open mind can't do your part-time job, but they can do their desk job, so they might only.
Only qualify under my job, cause they, yeah, they.
So yeah, that would be part of the claims process again.
Yeah, because like someone broke their wrist, like maybe you can't work for me because you broke your wrist because of the way the job duties are. But you're a teacher and you could still go to your teacher job with your broken wrist potentially.
So you're still working full-time and you're taking PMFL because of a broken wrist.
I don't know. I mean, there's like also like these situations, it's hard until situations arise, right? That's part of the.
Right. And and Sarah, right, who oversees the the benefits side of things, we will have this discussion about how to deal with these kind of scenarios that will pop up because inevitably they will. And what the outcome will be will definitely be determined on what the law is, what the rule is, and then what anything we need to speak or clarify further about that.
That's a pretty big one, isn't it? I think that's huge.
So the the leave depends on whether you're taking, the benefit would depend on whether it's both jobs or just one job. If it's just one job, your benefits are going to be based on your income from that one job.
Yeah.
So there's lots of reasons why still working more than one job could only take leave from one. So for instance, they have the Monday through Friday job and then they work somewhere on the weekend. And they have to have treatments that only happen Monday through Friday. So they're only taking leave from one job and they're still working their weekend job.
They're still trying to make ends meet. It's not a matter of working a system.
They're getting benefits. They're getting benefits on the job that they're no longer doing.
Correct.
So using the scenario of Tina's employees, let's say they're working one and a half jobs. So now they're working one job and they're getting benefits of a fraction of that half of the job. They are not making more than they were making before.
Okay. And we feel that our systems are good enough to be able to.
Discernal that, yeah.
Great.
But I think people with multiple jobs is extremely common. Here in Maine. Yeah, so.
I'll add in real quick. Our system does track all employees who have multiple jobs. So we are tracking that as well as people who have local jobs whose combined income is over the social security cap. We're tracking all that. And I just did a quick query. We have a hundred and thirty-six self-employed individuals who have elected coverage.
Hundred and thirty-six?
Hundred and thirty-six.
And that will be part of the, obviously, the the marketing for the program. Yes, you can elect coverage under the program.
And if that second job is in New Hampshire or Massachusetts.
Then it's not a covered job.
It's not covered.
Yeah, okay, great, okay.
But that would mean.
Or might not be a covered job.
But it has to be a covered job. You have to be working your job in Maine.
Yeah, it has to be a coverage. It depends on whether it's a covered job. Yes.
So a covered job, I have a full-time job with a company in New Hampshire that I do remotely in Maine and they pay into the PMFL. I have a part-time job working weekends for. Whatever.
Me and Struck.
Yeah. And.
Hey, I mean, Tim gave you that number during this meeting. The system is tracking it.
Okay, got it.
Yes, Jenny. Clarifying question with regards to the comment that was made that someone, I believe it was a member of Select Board of Moral. Their comment was concerning the funding for the staffing and administration of PFML coming out of the PMFL fund as opposed to the general fund. Can I just get the standard answer for that? Because I think it makes sense to me, but I'm I'm curious why there would be consternation about it from the public.
I I can lean in on it. I know that so in terms of the fund, so the fund pays for benefits and administrative costs, which includes staffing, the technology, all of that. And that was, you know, something that the that the statute clearly says you can.
So there wasn't a burden on the public taxpayers, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah. Oh, thank you.
And I mean, traditionally, I think it would be very rare for the general fund to pay for a program not operated out of the general fund. So.
These are the thoughts I had. I just wanted to.
Is the overhead associated with a private plan? And and that overhead is taken into account with the premiums that you pay in the private plan, right?
Judy, I can answer it. I know Judy wants to.
So the statute allows for us to charge an administrative fee to private plans to cover the costs of overseeing those private plans. And we we do and have been monitoring specifically the amount of time and spent on that. And we'll be analyzing that to determine whether or not the current amount of two hundred and fifty dollars is adequate going forward.
So I'm thinking from an employer's standpoint, their total cost includes the overhead of the private plan and is going to include a cost to the paid to the department laborers.
So the application fee is two currently two hundred and fifty dollars. The administrative fee, if approved, is two hundred and fifty dollars. If it's a fully insured plan, their overhead, if you will, is the premium that's paid for that insurance policy. They can continue to withhold if they choose. They can withhold from their employees' wages to offset the cost of the premium for the, it cannot exceed what they would otherwise be able to withhold. But some employers have indicated that they will be doing that. They will be withholding from their employees' wages in order to cover the cost of premium for the insurance policies. And similarly, self-insured plans could do the same to withhold wages to cover the cost to for their self-insured plan as well. Did that answer your questions?
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether the total cost is going to be different for people who use private companies versus the.
It it may be, but that's their voluntary decision. One of the things we say in the materials for private plans is here's some questions to think about. Be thoughtful about what the cost is going to be to administer your private plan and measure whether or not those costs as compared to whatever it costs you to be in the state plan that those costs are more beneficial for you and your employees in determining whether to go self the private plan move.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Jenny.
I'm sorry. I'm just ticking down through the list. That that person from Select Board also said that they have employees who are ineligible that are required to be contributors to the fund. Is that true? I and how, why, why, how, how is that? Like, I feel like we discussed this in week three. But now I'm just really confused and I'm an employer that administers this stuff. So if they don't have anybody who's ineligible, so I don't understand it.
I think at least what I heard when it's like ineligible is talking about folks that are, they're already getting paid leave. Therefore, there is no lost wages, so they wouldn't be applying for benefits under PFML. But yet they're paying in PFML premium.
That was the Freeport Public Works guy.
Yeah.
Yes.
But the person from the Select Board from Moral had said that they have an eighty-year-old who is never going to be eligible.
That's not ineligible. They're saying someone who's unlikely to ever take it. That's the I I thought that was that was a.
He used the word ineligible.
Yeah, because in their mind was ineligible, but technically, in our technical minds, that's not ineligible. That's unlikely to take it.
Okay.
I mean, that's like saying I take it from single people and they're never going to take family leave, which, as you know, is not necessarily true for people who have parents and siblings. So, yeah.
Okay.
But the eighty-year-old can go out on.
Yeah, they might, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she she just, she was, she, her using the eighty-year-old around life, like, the only group of people I can think of who are paying are the people who have not yet paid enough wages to be covered. So the first, the people, the the day one, just graduated from high school, just graduated from trade school, day one of of job. Those those workers are paying into the funds, but theirs, they have to build up a certain number of weeks before they're eligible. But they will eventually be eligible. To me, that is the only group of people who are paying who are in in the in that instant not eligible.
Okay. Wouldn't that also be people who are here on like immigrant visas? Like, I am here apple picking seasonally and I still have to pay in. Or did we address that? I can't remember. I know we talked about it. I don't know. Yeah, I don't think it was.
Answer.
So I can I can take a stab at it. I know, again, one of those bills that the legislature had tried to navigate through, but if those workers meet our definition of wages, that half a percent comes out of their their pay. Now, whether they're eligible or not will again depend on the information they provide us. Do they meet six times a staff wage and then we'll.
Just as a representative of that that sector, the eligibility generally is is there, but the real issue is whether or not they're really going to avail themselves of it. So it's not about eligibility. It's about utilization, which is still.
So the someone mentioned that you and we were talking about the the Freeport Public Works commenter. And the fact that that Freeport chooses to offer paid leave that then the employees may feel that they can't take advantage of the EFML that they're paying into. That is a choice their employer is making.
One thing I I picked up on when he he mentioned FMLA, which is unfair. But he he seemed to interpret, at least my interpretation of his, was that that he was going to get paid. So he didn't mention that they had a disability plan. He mentioned we already have FMLA and that and and the people that work for me think that's a no. So my point in raising that is really some education might be needed there, right? From a.
Well, maybe from their employer.
From the employer perspective, absolutely.
Because I also have a feeling that just because they're like, I'm offering short-term and long-term disability right now to my employees. That's because EFML hasn't started yet, right?
Right.
So when PFML starts, I will probably change what I offer. I don't know how, but I will probably change what I offer for short-term and long-term disability to to take advantage of the fact that they overlap. But I haven't made those changes yet. It's not offered yet. So I think there is some confusion as to, you know, what's happening today versus what might have been made first for employees, by their employees.
Well, he had a union plan too, didn't he?
There's much of that.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, I don't think it was just town of Freeport. I don't know.
Is there anything else? People have questions?
Can I just ask the the person who had the the implementation problems and the, you know, with the with the email addresses? I know we got we got an update about that some many meetings ago about the needing different email addresses for different companies. Is there sort of an update on what that what that looks like and in response to that gentleman's concerns?
I defer to Tim on, because I I the individual that commented, we he has reached out to us. But I'll I'll let Tim elaborate on.
So it it was an issue and we did find some workarounds with most employers and it, I haven't heard from any employers except for one employer who told us he could not get another email. And then funny enough, I got an email from him the other day saying, hey, this is my new email. The other one doesn't work anymore, so use this new email address. But I I think it's just a refusal to make a point. But really, our system is using the latest secure way for logins. And for most employers, it hasn't not been achieved.
But there's still a requirement for a single email per EIN.
Yes. So there there have been some employers who might own their domain and quick phone call like, hey, you own your domain, talk to your person and they can set up new email addresses at whatever your business is. You could add PFML one, PFML two, and oh.
There could be an alias.
They can be aliases. There are there are many, many ways to to address the issue.
Yes, Jenny. Sorry to feed the problem today. One of the biggest comments I've received and critiques and always constructive from payroll providers, especially for small business owners who have multiple businesses has been, and now that the time has passed, it's not an issue, but looking forward, is that when there's that registration, if the payroll provider's doing it and the emails going back to the owner, that the owner has to be responsive of the code or 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 whatever. And and I know that I experienced this myself. And so I just told the payroll provider, I will do it and then you take over, which is fine. But that was one of the things that came up as an issue. I'm not asking for a comment. I just am sharing it here because it just it just is something that has been a an issue and is, but that is the only thing that may come up so far. But that's been a common critique and I've heard it at least seven times.
So the payroll provider's trying to set up the account for them, but they can't because it needs a.
Yeah, they need to make sure that they hear that they're in contact with the employer, whoever owns the email at the time in order to set it up and and stuff. So it's and a lot of the smaller, you know, I guess the phrase today is unsophisticated business owners. They're generally working somewhere else away from their email. And I realize we all have it in our phone, but that's been the issue. I just I don't know if there's a way to work around that in the future, but I just wanted to plant the seed. And if there isn't, I get it. But I am carrying along the conversation in the comments as is my duty. That's it.
Yeah, a local apple grower near here gives me an earful every time I stop in for a delivery. Somewhere on Route, no, about that multiple email address requirement. And and to make it worse, I I got a phone number. It says it's a couple of months ago from Luke. So he could call and it was a number that wasn't working anymore. So.
Are there any, is the department sending out any proactive communications to new businesses who register in the state?
What the?
About the requirements? Like, like, you know, maybe I'm brand new and I just applied for my license and I, or, you know, my I just incorporated with the main Secretary of State's office. I'm a new business. Maybe I'm new to Maine. Maybe I don't realize Maine has paid family leave because I just moved here from out of state, opened my business. I you know, or or is that maybe not the time to communicate with someone new like that? Compared to maybe, you know, because they may not have employees yet or.
Yeah, that that's also one factor is too, is that 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 employer might not have employees yet, but that doesn't negate the fact that we probably should in some way let them know, hey, we have paid family leave. The only thing that I'm trying to figure out is how, where, where does that start? And I don't know if which, because again, I don't know where an employer starts to begin.
Well, you have, you incorporate with the Secretary of State's office.
Okay.
You.
If you're going to be incorporated.
You have to have something, right?
No.
Yeah, it'll see business.
Oh, DBA, okay. Maybe it's if if you have employees, so therefore if you create an account with Main Revenue Services or.
I think that's something.
Unemployment.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I'm thinking we have some date, like we have some unemployment.
Yes. And actually, no, thank you Nancy for bringing that up because I know we have had conversations with UI because I know they send a mailer or some communications to thousands of employers.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And I think I know we talked about it, but I don't know. I don't know if it's been.
Like when they redo the your your modifiers?
Yeah.
We can revisit.
Yeah.
We can revisit that.
Yeah, because there already is, like, I get an annual letter with my modifier for unemployment.
Your rate, you mean?
Yeah, your rate, yeah. Like, and how it changes every year. And then I give it to my payroll provider and that'd be a good already going out in the mail. Yes, Sarah?
I just had a general question about our business agency authority here. So have we, it's by the way, the conversation's gone today, can I assume that we're not interested in sponsoring any legislation or asking the DOL to help us craft legislation going forward to address some of these things that were brought up? We've talked about that in the past and and that's all. Just asking if we're no longer entertaining that.
I appreciate that question, Sarah. I I mean, I think that was one of the things we wanted to decide today. I personally, based on what I've heard and my my thought is that we we wait to see. My my thought is that we we wait to see how the program rolls out. We gather data. And then um and not take any legislative. Action or 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 steps towards towards that or or even providing input to the Department of Labor on specific um. Legislation that we would want it to sponsor.
Do you want a motion or a formal recommendation from the authorities?
Do you want to say something, Doug?
I was gonna ask the same question.
Okay.
Together in the same vote.
Um, I'm curious um to understand that uh, you know, legislation on a uh. On year versus an off year. Uh, those aren't the real names for that. So I I would think that, you know, there are, there is an appropriate time and place to be recommending. Legislation in the first place um and that may may factor into our discussion on this.
Yeah, that's a great point. Clutches, I mean, and that certainly factors into my thinking, which is that clapture is um. Maybe Ben knows, somebody else may know what it is, but it's it's late this month. So if we were, if we were going to. Um, try to introduce or get, try to propose legislation and try to get a sponsor for that. Or try to get the department, we would have to act extremely quickly. And at least for purposes of of the upcoming session, someone someone will correct me if I'm wrong about that, but. I'm saying that I think that we should that we should never do it. I just think that right now it doesn't seem. Like there's there's something specific that we have that we could just sort of run with it at the pace that we would need to. Especially in advance of the program rolling out.
Yeah, I was, yeah, it's it is September twenty sixth at four o'clock. I have that date and time in my head. But it's there.
I mean, yeah, we could take a a a vote, just like the, right, Maria? That we don't wanna anything now or I don't know that's necessary.
We we could. I I don't know. I don't know that I feel strongly about it when we're the other.
What would we be voting about? We don't have a.
Like not taking action, yeah.
I'm personally, if I was gonna make an opinion known, um, I feel like we don't know what we don't know. Until the program starts. And, you know, I think once the program launches in May. That's when we're, you know, gonna see some things we want to deal with. I mean, I think until that happens, we don't really know. We maybe, there may maybe something we think is a potential problem today that isn't a problem at all. Once, you know, rubber meets the road.
I think education will help a lot, honestly, because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. People have just been. Living their lives and not, it isn't real yet. And so I think we're gonna learn a lot as it comes into implementation, particularly around. You know, all those stuff, like the guy from Freeport, like I'm guessing that they're just not in compliance right now. And they're gonna have to go back and figure that out and educate their own workforce about this. And then some of those concerns may go away. But why can't I, you know, opt out of the plan as an individual?
Well, I'm kind of curious.
Yeah, that's gonna continue to be an issue for people, I think. They don't wanna, they don't wanna pay the premium period.
Well, you can't opt out. I mean.
I know, but that but why, you know, metaners, right? We don't wanna know why. So what is our answer? Because the law, the law was written that way or what are we supposed to say?
Doug has a question, but I can try to. I mean, so the the law guides kind of that that process. And so the way that the definition of employee was written. Captures or we think interprets captures most employees and for employers is a little bit more. Um narrowly defined, but with the way that we've gone about the program and educated is that if you meet our definition of wages. Under the definition of a statute, you are considered an employee. Um. You're paying into the program unless you're electing coverage, which again, that has a that's a separate process.
Well, I think also like in an opt out, someone asked you this, right? You're out in the community and someone asks you, why can't I opt out? Um, are you allowed to opt out of FICA and Social Security? I I mean, it's 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 equivalent, I think, if I'm not wrong. Um, and maybe that's a simple way to answer the question. Um, that's easily understandable with a um, something that people already are familiar with as a correlated item.
And I think, you know, saying it's the law, but I think it's the law because the intent is to provide coverages and instances that you can't foresee right now. So I think that's why everybody participates because we never know who's going to need.
And that that was gonna be my comment in response to what you said. I I agree with it a hundred percent. I think there is, there is a legislative process. And it's followed. This authority is part of that process for the public and it's being followed. I didn't hear anything today that led me to have any concern that. Either of those processes is failing, uh that there's anything of significant enough concern to say we can't move forward and probably in in. Opposition to that, most of the testimony seem to be, it's not broke, don't fix it yet. Let's let's stay the course and and I would be in favor of not opening this up. Um, to to additional legislative discussion that isn't prompted outside of this authority. Once you go to the legislature, you lose total control of the process. You never know what's gonna come out.
Um, could I uh get a reminder? Um, it's not about legislation. About the actuarial study and the timeline for that?
Yes, so uh the report is due to the department in December and I think and I know in January. The authority will listen to the presentation. I'm I'm I don't know. I'm assuming they'll get a report. Everybody would get a report beforehand. Uh, but that's where the authority in January make a decision about whether we can go live as intended on May in May. Of twenty twenty six, but right now the actuary um is taking the data that we've given them to do their analysis and. Should have.
Analysis.
Yeah. Yes, um, yeah, and so we are still on track to have that report out by December of this year.
That's soon.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't wanna wiggle my way back into a legal discussion.
That'd be forty dollars an hour.
I can't. I I literally don't understand. I I don't understand the issue of groups of companies getting.
I cannot, no, really, that is.
That's such a red line. AG's office constantly read any newspaper article, criminal cases, civil cases. AG's office does not comment on pending litigation, it's pending litigation.
That's fine.
Well, so Maria sent around the um things that um about it and so.
Can read those and.
Right.
Okay.
I'm so, I'm sorry, I I I get that, I get that the AG's office doesn't comment on pending legislation. Separate and apart for that, it does raise an issue that I frankly um don't have enough information about. And um, you know, i- it's about an FAQ. It's about a, you know, it's about a um. You know, a a position that the department has taken. So I'm wondering if there is some way short of. Requesting that there be any comment on pending legislation that we could, that the authority could be more educated about the issues. What are we, you know, what what are the, what are the, what are the the various issues that impact? Whether or not employers can be part of a a group self insured plan. Is there, is there a way that we can have a discussion about it without? You putting you in a position where you're, you know, uncomfortable?
My brief can be circulated.
Okay.
Well, Maria, Maria, what you said was different.
Oh, sorry.
I think was different. What you said was part of a a group self insured plan. Is that what you said?
Well, that's not actually what they're trying to propose to.
Well, I know, but a group self insured plan would be like MAMIC and that would be okay, right?
Uh, a group self insured plan wouldn't be MAMIC because that would be self insurance.
MAMIC is an insurance plan.
You're an insurance plan, but you end up becoming part of that group in order to.
It's a group.
So they have a trust.
Sorry if I'm, yeah, I think we're we're talking about the same thing and and sorry if I I I I use the the wrong wording on it, in part because I do need. Need uh to be educated about what it is, but the individuals who would like to pool and have the lower surety bond rates. And have the their collective TPAs um but be but be approved by the department for individual. Um, self insured plans. It's a trust. Is that what you're saying, David? You're correcting my. Yeah.
It's not a trust, that's the point. It's much looser than a trust.
Well, I think maybe we should consider reading Nancy's brief. Um, and I I'm not sure we have um that might answer some of our questions.
Yeah.
And I guess my only comment, my only question is, could there be a MAMIC like trust for this? I guess the answer is yes, of course.
Uh, they have a workers' comp trust, which is not a MAMIC like trust. That's like, so they're self insured.
Got it.
Um, and so they are pooling their risk.
Yep.
Uh, with their workers' comp. But what they're proposing to do is not pool their risk. Because they're not pooling risk. They all have individual.
Understood.
Accounts. They want to, in essence, have a purchasing group.
I I understand.
Yeah.
All that. What I'm trying to get into my brain is there could be a provider that does. It could be a spinoff of UNO that decides that I'm gonna take this little tiny ball of BMFL. And create a risk pool that I'm gonna get.
Then you're insured. If you do that, then you're subject to the professional financial regulation.
Well, and also, um, every state has different rules about risk pooling. Um, and so like what you might be able to do in Vermont is maybe different than you can do in Maine. Um, and so now we're into like insurance regulation and that side of things. So there's, I think this. Is a lot more complicated.
I know it. I'm just trying to get into my head.
But it seems like it would be. But I I I wouldn't wanna speak. I'd wanna read.
You don't have to talk at all.
I mean, just, this is Bob Carey, the uh Bureau of Insurance. MAMIC is an insurance company. MAMIC is not a self funded group. It's it's a mutual, which is, you know, different than a. But it's an insurance company. When you buy, when you're insured through MAMIC, your rates are fixed. It doesn't depend on your experience. I mean, it does in the long term, but for the if for the given year. That's not what is being proposed, so I don't want us to conflate MAMIC, which is an insurance company regulated by the Bureau of Insurance. With a coalition of employers that fund a self insured group. We also oversee and regulate these same groups for their workers' comp. And what I think Bruce and Joe are arguing is that they should be allowed to do the same type of mechanism. For their uh paid family medical leave benefits as they do for their workers' comp, but. We can talk further about how we at the Bureau of Insurance oversee and regulate self insured groups. Uh, under the workers' comp scheme and how that might have a parallel. Maybe in the future for the uh paid family medical leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, did, Ma- uh Maria, do you want to have any kind of official vote or are we? Do we need that?
About the, about no action legislation? I mean, I think I I think I would put it in the reverse. I think if anybody has something that they wanna propose. Uh, in terms of of legislation or legislative uh in- input or anything like that, they should, they should make that motion. Because um clapture is September twenty sixth, but absent that, I don't think we need a a motion to not take action.
Okay. Would anyone like to have something there? Interested in putting forth? It looks like no? Okay. There. Anything else from the comments that anyone wants to bring up?
I think I I just would like to acknowledge the, I mean, I I mentioned that we circulated Jack Jones um written comments and and. I, you know, I also recognize it's hard to kind of read that and digest it. It's very technical, what he issues that he's raising. We may not be in a position to discuss that today, but um I would like to. Follow up and maybe follow up with Luke. I think some of the, some of the issues maybe could be resolved. Maybe they're. Subject of an FAQ. I don't know, but um I I don't, I just don't wanna lose sight of the fact that they are, that they are there. Um, so I will. Follow up maybe with Luke and Reggie after the meeting unless anybody has anything that they wanna.
Is this what you just emailed everyone?
This, this is the the written co- the written comments um. Went to his, his or his oral comments today about some of the techni- very technical questions that he had.
Uh, personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable. I mean, I haven't been able to read that, so I feel like we should read it first. Yeah. And but yeah, do you wanna follow up the presentations though, too?
Well, I can follow up. I guess I would invite anybody if they, once they read it, if they, if they have any um input or 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 issues to let. Let me and um Luke and Reggie know that. And then, you know, depending on once we dive into it, and if you would like it to, like to see any of those issues appear on an agenda for a future meeting. Let me know for for discussion as a group, let me know that. But otherwise, um. I will, I will follow up post meeting.
That sounds good.
Okay.
There. So uh, should we remind everyone when the next meeting is?
Yeah, November fourth at nine, yes.
And then um have we already scheduled the? Is there a December meeting that?
There's a January.
Okay, so nothing in December and then the January meeting will be the actuarial presentation.
And vote.
Okay. And the vote. Okay.
Would we see any of the actuarial stuff in advance? To look at?
Yes. That's the idea, Sarah, yeah.
Well, yes, it's probably, I mean, they'll be done in December and and then it'll get circulated in plenty of time, weeks of time, I would assume. For us to uh be prepared before the January meeting because of, I mean, the presentation, I mean, I think everyone should have read it already. Before they come in January.
I'm sorry, yeah, I think they, yeah, we, I think the idea was, and I was just looking to see if we had sort of remember that there was some concern that we. That members be able to digest what they're hearing before we're in a position to have to vote. But I think we decided. That as long as we received it in advance, that having the meeting in mid-January would be. Likely would be sufficient. Does anybody remember?
I think that was right. And so I'm also incredibly important to attend that January meeting. Obviously.
And it's. It created to be a longer meeting. I think we have it, I at least I have it on my calendar for eight thirty to noon to allow sufficient time to. Hear the presentation and then discuss before there's a vote.
We can, if there's a weather type thing, we'll just certainly something.
True, right.
Virtually, if there was weather.
Realize, yeah, we can. Yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's weather and it's fully, it it might end up being that way, but we would announce that it, we would.
Okay.
We do that the same way schools do it at the last minute.
Do we have the, to have a fully virtual meeting and have it constitute?
I would say, my opinion is that if it's because of a weather emergency, if we could. Have a fully virtual if it's because of weather conditions. Or somebody who lives close to the dust and comes in and has.
Um, Jenny, did you have something?
I wanted to move to a journe, but I don't know if that's a popular.
Um, yeah, if everyone's good, I feel like we're good. Uh, I don't know how to do this.
Right, it's all in favor.
All in favor of a journey? Yes, okay.
Thank you.